Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 31st meeting for fiscal year 2022 with the Milton Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order and introduce ourselves. My name is Meredith Hall, currently serving as Chair. And if the members could introduce themselves, we can begin with Cheryl.
Cheryl Chigaias, member and secretary.
Rich?
Rich Filler, member.
Maggie?
Maggie O'Phill, member.
And Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
Great, thank you. We'll begin with our administrative items. The next upcoming meeting dates are June 2nd and the 23rd. For everyone to mark their calendars. Now, the only thing is on June 3rd is the first community preservation meeting. And Rich, I just wanted to ask you, would you rather us move our meeting so you could attend both? Or you would have to, if you're attending that one, you would miss ours? So I don't know how you feel. If you, we can certainly talk to Tim when he comes in about another date that would be close to June 2nd. So you could do both?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so that's, so I don't know what June 1st looks like for people. Is it a possibility? That would be the most, the easiest. And then there's Tim. Welcome, Tim. Do you want, oh, I'm sorry. And I, would you like to introduce yourself? And we'll also introduce Julia as well and Josh.
We started the meeting already?
We did.
Oh, very prompt. Tim's here with planning community development. Apologies, I was trying to get dinner on the table.
That's okay. And Josh, you'd like to introduce yourself?
Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner. Dinner already on the table.
And Julia?
Julia Getman-Clark.
Great, thank you, our great staff. Okay, so we were just, Tim, starting with reviewing the dates. The meeting, next meeting days being June 2nd and the 23rd. The only thing that I realized this week is that what's exciting, it's our, the first community preservation meeting is also that night on Zoom. And I was asking Rich, since he's our representative, if, if he would like for us to reschedule that our June 2nd meeting to accommodate the, his other date. So he could, he could attend the June 2nd. And I don't know what your calendar is like. I was, we were looking at June 1st, which is a Wednesday, the day before.
Meredith, I've got a 40B hearing that night, so Josh will have to, will have to cover. But I would defer to him on that. But, but yeah.
Meredith, I have a commitment on the 1st. I, I won't be able to make the 1st if we do swap it.
Okay.
Do I know? I'm sorry, Meredith.
No, go ahead.
We had planned to reschedule due to my schedule on the 9th. But, and that still is a conflict for me. So if we have, we just might have to have a meeting where one of us can't attend and has to watch the tape.
The 9th is town meeting.
Oh, that's right, the 9th is town meeting, you're right. I still have a conflict, but you're right, it's town meeting.
So the only other option would be the 8th, but that means?
Yeah, I, I don't move it back for me then, because I'll be in, I'll be from the 8th to the 10th.
Okay.
So the, the other thing to kind of reckon with, and maybe we'll kind of see where we stand at the end of this meeting, is, is if there's anything even on the agenda. Because I don't think we have anything necessarily, unless we want, I mean, it depends. But you know, if the scenic road hearing wraps up, then there's no applications to be heard. And depending on what you all do with your business tonight, we may be kind of free and clear to, you know, just skip it.
Just skip that meeting.
There, there are two agenda items that aren't on tonight, but I would like to see on upcoming agenda. I sent one to Meredith and I think the MPIC sent one through Tim and Josh to Meredith as well. So I don't know if, I mean, the 23rd, what that agenda looks like, but if they could put on that agenda.
That's what I was thinking, Cheryl, that we could put them on that, for sure.
Okay.
All right, so, all right, let's reconvene on that. And just, you know, I think it's too early to make the call because in case something does come in, an application that we need to review. So, but.
Meredith, I'll, I'll tell you this, we have to have the agenda posted by Tuesday. So we wouldn't get an application in between now and then that we would need to do. It's just more along the lines.
Okay.
Business.
All right, so we may, we may cancel the second, the meeting on the 2nd. But we will plan on the 23rd and having a, a nice, good, full agenda on that. Okay, great. Next, the approval of the minutes. Has everybody been able, I don't know, there's three sets of minutes. And I don't know, it's really just Rich, Cheryl and I for the April 14th minutes, since we were the only ones present. Then we also have minutes from the 28th and the 12th.
So we have April 14th, April 28th, and May 12th, right?
Yes.
So I suggested edits for all three, but I'm sorry, I just did the ones for May 12th yesterday. And I forgot to let you all know that I did that. So you might wanna, if you haven't looked at them, you might want to take a look, but.
Hold off on May 12th then, because I haven't read, I, I did, I reviewed the 14th and the 28th, but not the 12th. Not, I reviewed the 12th, but not the edits, so.
Okay, so Rich, have you had a chance to review at least the 14th?
Yes.
And how about the 28th?
Yes.
All right, so then I'll make a motion to approve these separately. Meredith, the April 14th minutes as amended.
I would second. All right, roll call, it's just Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the April 28th minutes as amended.
Second. All right, roll call again. Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you, that's great. And we will defer the 12th until our next meeting. All right, staff update, Tim?
So a couple of things that we've been working on is grant season. And so Josh and I have been working hard on a couple of grant applications. One of which is the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs has what they call Planning Assistance Grant, which is used for basically planning for sustainable building practices or environmental, environmentally sound kind of planning practices. So what we, we put together that application, we sent that in last week. We were looking for money to advance the planning and zoning efforts that we've been working on in East Milton for the past several years. You're probably all very aware, starting back in 2018, 2019, you know, around the time of when the Falcone Project came around, the Planning Board started to look seriously about land use regulation in East Milton. There was a neighborhood-wide survey that was done. We had the Urban Land Institute come in and do a technical assistance panel, which is where real estate design, development, experts from around the region come in and kind of, you know, helicopter in and provide an expert opinion on what they think the potential is in a given sort of downtown district. We actually did one many years ago in, in the Central Ave District, which led to the Central Ave PUD zoning, which Hendry's and 36th. That process led to hiring Judy Barrett's group to do a sort of a broader working group in East Milton to kind of try to come to a consensus vision for development future in the neighborhood. That was a long process, almost all of those meetings. And, and they came with a, with a really interesting report about, you know, what the possibilities are in East Milton. And so that's similar to the Milton Village process of sort of, you know, you do the analysis, you do the planning, and then you sort of, you put that into, into regulations. Now is, now is the step to actually start drafting some zoning and getting it out there for people to kind of sink their teeth into, for the Planning Board to debate, neighborhoods to debate, to try to see how do we, how do we put, you know, what, what the neighborhood's vision for, for the future of East Milton is into, into land use regulation. And so we requested $40,000 from this grant. I think we put together a really good application. One of the things that is required is a 25% match from the municipality. So we've, we've asked the Master Planning Presentation Committee to provide that match out of their fiscal 20 budget. That's something that they have agreed to do. But as with everything MPIC, both the Planning Board and the Select Board need to approve those, those expenditures. So that's something for, for a future agenda, possibly on the 23rd. I think the Select Board's going to be taking it up next week. So, you know, we think it's, it's, it's the right time. I think every, every time you go out in East Milton, you know, we can, we can have debate about what things look like. But I think everyone agrees, we need something. And, and this is just another opportunity to kind of figure out what that something is going to be. Hopefully, we get it. We're expecting an announcement in July-ish. And hopefully, we can hit the ground running with it, if and when that goes down. The other grant that we're working on is called the Community One Stop Growth. This is a kind of a bundle of state grant programs that have a single application, so it's pretty handy. You just put all your projects out there and then the state figures out which programs kind of fit the most. We're, we're kind of doubling up on, on the East Milton project, so if we don't get one, hopefully we get the other. And then the other thing is technical assistance on MBTA community zoning. Just to sort of get as much professional help as we possibly can to tackle that thing. I, I haven't quite put together the proposal yet. I think we're going to want a lot of different types of help. That may be something that, you know, we can have a discussion on. I'm going to try to write it in as broad a way as possible, so that we can craft a, an RFP that kind of really suits our specific needs. The Commonwealth has expressed a ton of interest in using the Community One Stop Program to help municipalities with the MBTA, MBTA community zoning requirements. This is a grant that doesn't, it's not going to get awarded until September or October, at which point we will have had hopefully a couple of months, if not a couple of weeks, to digest whatever the final guidelines from DHCD are going to be on that. So fingers crossed on that.
Another, sorry, can I just ask a question about these grant cycles? So if we are awarded, say in July, we find out that we are a recipient, you know, of a monetary, of, you know, $30,000, say. Can you explain what the timeline is when we would actually receive funding? And how soon we have to spend that money?
For the Planning Assistance Grant, that is a, it's, it's sort of, it's a contract that you engage in with EEA. And that contract expires at, is it, Josh, is it December or June?
It's December, it's 18 months.
So it's, it's, it's December of '23. So it's a two-year kind of, you know, thing. So if we get it in July, we've got, we've got, we've got a cushion, so we don't have to do it all in, in the one fiscal year.
So we should put that on a future agenda to talk about and just make sure everyone's on the same page with the direction.
No, exactly. And, and so, you know, we, we put together a kind of a draft kind of RFP to kind of inform that application. Kind of, you know, vetted that. But I think before we put something out, you know, we can, we can definitely sort of look through that. I think that the advice that, that you get from people who write these things and from people who respond to these things is you want to keep it broad to sort of give the vendor the opportunity to kind of spread their wings and kind of make a, a really kind of good proposal. And I think especially when it comes to East Milton, you know, given how contentious a lot of those issues are, I think we really want to go into this zoning process with an open mind and the ability to sort of be flexible. And so, you know, that, that's something that, you know, when we sort of drafted the draft RFP, we kind of thought of that. And we put together the application, we thought of that as well. Because we want to be able to be responsive to, you know, what is, you know, what is feasible on the one hand, but acceptable on the other, which we're always sort of interested in. So that's going to wind up hopefully being a, a good, successful document. The next thing is, and, and I think I emailed you all to this effect, but this is just a quick kind of informational thing. And I'm actually preparing a little bit of a more detailed brief for next week. But I'll, I'll share those materials with you all when, when I produce them. Josh has been helping out with, he has, so we're, we're talking about the MBTA bus redesign proposal. This is a project that the T has been working on for several years now, to kind of reimagine the bus system, to reconfigure routes in a way that serve people who need transit the most and really kind of utilize the T's resources in the most efficient way possible, provide the best possible service. They have a ton of ridership data, but it's all just kind of dumped into a bucket. Josh has been sifting through that bucket for me. So, you know, we'll, we'll have a little bit more information about what the implications are for Milton. But the proposal that they've come up with is, as I said in my email, a little bit of a mixed bag. On one hand, the 240 bus, which runs from Ashmont down to either Randolph or Holbrook or Avon, is going to see a reduction in service because effectively it's the same route through Milton, but two sort of branches of that route, they just overlap on, on 28. The, the Holbrook-Randolph service is going away, that's going to be picked up south of Milton somewhere else. So it's not, it's not cutting the service in half necessarily, but what they basically said is going from 30-minute headways, you know, in the middle of the day to 60-minute headways. More in the peak hour, but it's, it's definitely a reduction. As I noted, I take that bus every day, sucks, I'll figure it out. That's one thing where we'll want to sort of figure out, you know, what is the ridership? I'll tell you, just being on that bus every day, I'm the only guy that stops between Ashmont and Walnut Street. And I'm the only guy that gets on, you know, between Walnut Street and Ashmont. So at least on that particular part of the route, I, I don't see a ton of usage. But again, we have data for that, and obviously there are people that do use it. It's important for those folks. So, you know, we want to figure out the best approach to that. The other side is a really good improvement in service on the 215 route, which goes from Quincy Center down to Adams Street through East Milton Square, up Grand Ave, and used to go to Ashmont. In the new proposal, it's actually going to go, stay up, well, not up, it's funny, it'll pick Adams Street back up in Chester, but up Grand Ave, cross the bridge and stay on Adams Street, up to Field Corner. That is going from 60-minute headways to 30-minute headways. And then again, an increase in service. That's really great news and probably appropriate for that route. It goes through a lot of really relatively dense areas, especially in Quincy. I mean, what, the reason they're getting more service is because of all the developments happening in Quincy Center. Obviously, the red line is seeing a ton of service and they're trying to get a little bit more of a, a kind of a release valve, you know, for that line, you know, via the 250 bus. But, you know, we definitely would be the beneficiaries of all that. And obviously goes through an amenity-rich area through East Milton. And again, if we, putting over there, it'll be a really, a really great advantage to have improved bus service. There are a couple of other minor things. The 245 bus, which apparently disappeared during COVID, it's coming back, which is nice. And then, you know, the 716, the one that goes up Blueville Ave, no change to that, that's a flag route, very infrequent service. It's something I think in the long-term future, it would be really nice to see like a real bus go down Blueville Ave, but just not in the cards right now. But we're going to be doing a little bit more ridership analysis to kind of see like, okay, you know, what are the implications for the 240 bus? You know, how is this going to help people on the 215 route, you know, who are already, you know, maybe dependent on that? I'll be presenting that to the Select Board, I'll, I'll share that with you all. And the Select Board may decide that they might, there's an open comment period, the Select Board may decide they want to submit comments. You all may decide you want to submit comments as well. But I think all in all, like I said, a mixed bag, but, but probably, I, I would say on the whole, a pretty good benefit for Milton with that improved. And then the last thing I want to say, you already mentioned CPC, Public Forum, next week. They're putting together the Preservation Plan. They want to get feedback from folks, really important stuff. Especially if we don't have a meeting that night, it would be, it would be cool to attend. And they've been working really hard on that. Josh, do you have anything? Josh has been, Josh has been great, by the way.
Hey, Josh.
Really like, just hand him stuff and, and he does it, it's amazing. He's been doing a real good job.
What I'm here for, and when I'm not blushing, I'm trying to do what I can. Yes, that, that meeting will be as sort of, as interactive as possible. We've got breakout rooms scheduled and I've been really pumping it on all the sort of publicity platforms. There's a letter coming out in the Times, or I believe that came out in the Times. So really trying to be as wide and net as possible to get meaningful feedback so that we can really have a plan that, that meets the community vision. So we hope to see you all there. And in those breakout rooms, we'll, we'll have a lot of good, active discussion.
Tell all your friends.
That's great. Anything else, Tim? That's good, all right. Then we can move on to Citizens Speak. If there's anyone from the, any viewers who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. And I'm not able to see this, but.
I don't see anybody with their hands up.
No, I think most people are probably here for some of the other items. Okay, then we can start with our public hearing. It's after 7:10, so the scenic road application on 693 Canton Avenue. And I think we have Kristen here, so.
So.
Sheila?
Kristen, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great, okay.
So did everyone get a chance, I know we weren't able to schedule a formal sidewalk, but did everyone get a chance to stop by? Kristen, were you able to flag out the?
She did, yes.
Yep, I saw her.
So the only other bit of news is we did receive comment from the Historical Commission, which I believe I forwarded out to everybody. And basically, with the Historical Commission, I'll, I'll read, I'll read the note, it's, it's only a few, a few lines. But the, the Historical Commission has discussed this application at length and objects to the plan as presented. We see no need for a second curb cut in driveway entrances, one as wide as 22 feet. Two 22-foot wide openings will be over 25% of the frontage and the present 22-foot wide curb that already exists with, of the existing driveway. The side of the scenic road is already one driveway opening after another. Virtually the entire front yard of this well-preserved late 18th century home will be asphalt. While there do not appear to be any town trees involved, the plan may require removal of trees on their property in order to construct a proposed large driveway. There is ample room on the lot for a tail or space to create an area to back in and reverse a vehicle direction subject to permit of forward entrance onto the road. Certainly reconsideration of the stone wall shown in the O'Fallagras is an allowable goal, but most of the wall shown has been removed to create the existing driveway and remaining stones scattered along the sidewalk are insufficient to protect the original wall. And an alternative creation of a space to turn around a vehicle would preserve not only the setting of this historic home, but also preserve some of the historic character of this secret road. And that's from Steve O'Donnell, Chair, on behalf of the Historical Commission. So those are the only other comments that we've received. I haven't heard from Conservation Commission, Tree Warden, or Shade Tree Advisory Committee. They've all gotten the application materials. So that's, that's the only news. And again, other, other than your, your own sort of observations of the site and your read of the application materials.
All right, I think we can open it for discussing, discussion. Unless Kristen has anything else that you would like to add as well?
This is the first time I'm hearing the response from the Historical Commission. I'm, I'm honestly pretty shocked. I, as Richard had mentioned during the last meeting, pretty much all of my neighbors around me have semicircle driveways. So it's pretty disappointing that I would be denied the right to have the same as what literally everyone around me has. The curb cut, as we discussed kind of repeatedly as well, wouldn't necessarily be in the jurisdiction of this group, but between me and the DPW. And what I'm asking for is honestly reasonable compared to what, again, is around me. Both my neighbor to my left and the neighbor directly across the street from me, who both have semicircle driveways, have curb cuts for each of their two openings that are 26 and a half feet wide, and I'm only asking for 22. Even the private driveway where Cheryl pulls in and out of is a 42 and a half foot curb cut for a 20-foot road. So I don't know, I just, I think this focus on the curb cut is interesting to me and disappointing.
All right, thank you, Kristen, I, I understand. And I guess now, if we could hear from members of the Planning Board, would anyone like?
Yeah, I just want to comment if I may, Meredith.
Yeah.
You know, this, I've.
You know, this, I've entered my eighth year on the planning board. And I'd just like to bring a little historical context to the scenic road application kind of and review that we've done in my time on the board. Most of the time it's been pretty routine, you know, trying to kind of fine tune what people are looking to do. This past year, there was an application out near, actually near Thayer Nursery that became really, I think, problematic for the homeowners and they sold their home. And, you know, I want to be, we got a lot of correspondence, you know, from the property owners and others about that. And I want to be sensitive and really sensitive to what the scenic road bylaw is intended for. And it's intended to review work in the public way. It's intended to look at stone walls and trees, I mean, that's what it says. Even, I went to the state, what our rules and regs reference, a state chapter 15c regulation from which our rules and regs are derived. And it is, it's pretty clear in that language too, that it's just the stone walls and the trees. So in this case, there's no trees in the public way as we understand it. And so to me, it seems as if we're, we're looking at the stone wall. And we've already talked about the stone wall being modified at some point in time. And it doesn't continue past this property, right? That is kind of that side of the road, the stone wall doesn't exist there anymore. Perhaps until you get down to the intersection with Highland, you know, where the church is. So it's not, so I think in terms of looking at that context, in terms of the stone wall, what's being proposed is an improvement to the continuity of the wall sort of instead of having it sort of fall apart and, and sort of blend into the grass, that it can be improved. And I think we should leave the curb cut to the DPW and the Building Department, which is where those applications go. They don't come to us as a curb cut, you know, it's the only reason we're discussing it here is because of the stone wall and the fact that Canton Ave is a scenic road. So, and I will say that it's really unfortunate that 40B bylaw allows the scenic road regulations to be waived. In fact, the 648 Canton Ave 40B that was recently approved is going to change the stone wall on the other side of the street. So, and the trees that line the street. So anyway, I would suggest that that's what we focus on.
Okay. Any other comments, members?
I'd like to, I'd like to comment also, Meredith.
Rich, you can hand up, actually.
I apologize.
That's all right, you can go.
Sorry, Rich, I'm not seeing you, I apologize, yeah.
How do you want it, should we raise our hands or should be, what do you want to do?
Yes, if you want, I do see a hand now, I'm sorry, I just didn't. So Rich, go ahead, you can go.
No, I was just going to agree with what Cheryl had mentioned, I think, I mentioned some of this in our last meeting. And, you know, I like the idea, I mean, obviously we have to go to the other commission and hear what they say, but I do think that last time we were talking about this, I was looking very much at, or my thought was that that's what they were going to be considering and that's why I jumped right to, it's not, there really isn't a wall there, there's some remnants of the wall. And I really like what Cheryl points out last time, which pointed out again, that we wouldn't be disrupting a continuous wall through neighbors. And I agree with Kristen, I mean, I have a hard time saying that all your neighbors have it, you can't have it. And so, I mean, the way I would be looking at this, and I don't know what our next steps are, but I'd be looking at it under the way that Cheryl had mentioned about the wall and not necessarily the curb cuts, because I don't, I'm not sure that that's our, what we should be looking at.
Thank you, Rich. Sean?
Thank you, Meredith. I, I find myself in, of similar thoughts to Rich and Cheryl. I went by again this morning, now I pass, I pass Kristen's home twice a day. So I've had the opportunity to look at it now each time, but today I, I walked it and took some time to look at it a little bit more closely. To call what is in front of Kristen's house a wall is probably an extreme exaggeration. The wall really ends before Kristen's property. Effectively that wooded area, which I believe is just part of the high school property, is really where the wall ends. And anything in front of Kristen's property is, at best case, a scattering of some large stones. It's really not a wall. Comparably across the street, I think there are conditions that I would describe more properly as walls, but not what's in front of Kristen's. I, if, if that, if this project restores what's in front of the house to a semblance of a wall, I think it would be an improvement, even if it would have an opening in it. The drive is marked out, it's flagged with white flags. I commend you on flagging and I've never seen anything flagged so, so accurately. I think there's a flag every 12 inches, Kristen. So whoever did it, did it with the intention that any of us could understand exactly where the drive is going. My only concern is the, and I do think that the Historical Commission made reference to it, is the volume of pavement that would be in front of the house. I, you know, I don't know that that's even within our jurisdiction, but it's just not really aesthetically going to contribute to the beautiful property that I think you have. But I, I have a really hard time considering the scattering of stones at the edge of your property, a wall, as they are now.
Thank you, Sean. Maggie, yes?
So I just wanted to first comment on Cheryl's comment. So the house on Hillside that you looked at was my house that I actually lived in for 15 years. And so when we first purchased the house, it actually had a semicircle driveway in front. And so I actually removed the driveway in front and built the stone wall extended, there was not a stone wall there, it was just a lilac hedge. So I extended the stone wall and then changed my driveway to just be to the right to what it is now. And I believe that the owners lived there for such a short amount of time, less than two and a half years, because with my understanding, they didn't like living next to a horse barn. So I am a huge fan of stone walls, no matter how sad they may be. I think there's always an opportunity to resurrect and recreate a stone wall. I tend to agree with the Historical Commission. I do think that there would be too much loss of the green space in front of the house. I know that's not in our jurisdiction, but I also have a hard time, as I said last time, not, not seeing what a project could end up. And I've seen a lot of bad projects and I've seen a lot of good projects. And for a project that size, as Sean mentioned last time, it's going to be a very expensive project. And I know that's not my concern. But I, I think that we are losing too many trees on townways and on, and on people's properties. And I think there's way too much paving in people's front yards, even on Randolph Ave. There are two houses side by side, all paver in their front yard. And the town, as I understand it, has not done anything about that yet. I believe we are a special town, I think we all can agree we're a special town. And if you turn to page 34 of our master plan, it's because of the green spaces and the trees. And I'm just afraid that if we grant this permission to cut the stone wall, even though it's a sad one, I think we're setting ourselves up for more stone wall damage in the future. And as I said, we're a special town because we have these bylaws in place. And I kind of think that every time we grant a variance or a special permit, we're slowly, even though there are minor changes, the changes start to become acceptable and normal. And then slowly we lose kind of what makes us special. And, and I just think, I know it's a small, it's a small thing, but I think it's a really important thing. And really I'd love to see, even though the stone wall ends at this house, eventually I'd love to see the whole Canton Ave be restored with stone walls.
Thank you, Maggie, I appreciate that. And I have to say, I agree with Maggie. I, and I, and I understand Kristen's opinion, her viewpoint, that she's surrounded, that some of the houses next to her have circular drives. The reason why we now have a scenic road bylaw is because in the 50s, this is what we were starting to see. And there was, I think people were starting to see that our, some of our most beautiful roads, Canton Ave being one of them, was, was, people were taking trees down, it was curb cuts. And it was altering, it was altering the look of Milton as you drove through it. So I believe probably the houses that you're referring to were built prior to there being a scenic, a scenic bylaw in our town. And it was passed because it was as a result of seeing this. And across the state, not just in Milton, but other, other communities as well. I am very much in support of restoring the stone wall. That's something that we are part of our, what we're going to be discussing. I think we should almost maybe look at this as a two-part, because we are approving the restoration of the stone wall, regardless of whether there's a curb cut or not. So I think we, you know, when we vote on this, we might want to vote on the two separate items. One being that we are, I think, all unanimously in favor of the restoration of the stone wall and allowing her to rebuild the existing stone wall is because we all recognize it could be greatly improved. But I do, I do also feel that removing, even if it's a small, you know, even if it's that section, I just, I'd rather not see that removed, I'd rather see it built and have a continuous. And I think it would enhance, from a real estate perspective and privacy, to keep your trees. And, and again, that's not our jurisdiction, but it's from a real estate point of view, to enhance that stone wall and preserve sort of the character of when your home was built, I think would, would be greatly valued. And I would encourage that, so. And Cheryl and Sean, are you, your hands are up again, or?
Yes.
Mine is too.
And Rich, sorry.
I want to add something. I think what's been incredibly detrimental in the last few years on Canton Avenue is the advent of fences right up against the property line and up against stone walls. I've, I've walked Canton Ave and I've found it to be really, really unattractive. And I, when I drive it, it's the same thing. And I asked Tim today, and maybe he can give an assignment to Josh, to see what other towns have in their scenic road bylaws and what the state allows us to include. Because what I've found is just walls and trees in the public way. But, and I did inquire with our building commissioner about whether permits are required for the fences. And it's only if the fences are a certain height, and I think it's six feet, that requires a permit. So I, there was somebody who came to the board, actually I think it was via email, maybe a couple of years ago, with the same issue, the same question about the fences. So I would like for us to look into that, because I, I think that is far more detrimental than adding a curb cut myself. And I just wanted to be clear, I want to ask Tim, I, I don't think we can take a vote on the curb cut. It's not our jurisdiction, it's not what the application is about. So I just want, Tim, if you can clarify that?
Yeah, I think the thing of the application is, is the opening in the wall. That's, that's it. I, I think the reconstruction of the wall is an ancillary part of the project. I think that's the type of thing that in the context of the regulations that we have, which, you know, allow, you know, these are the considerations, preservation of natural resources, environmental values, historical values, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, public safety, encitatory actions proposed such as replacement of trees or walls, other sound planning considerations. So it's kind of, you know, you don't have the one without the other. The compensatory action for the opening of the wall is the restoration of the remainder of the wall. And that's sort of a bread and butter scenic road permit. You know, the other thing to sort of understand, and the, the planning board's job is to synthesize the advice and the counsel that they get from, from other boards. The Historical Commission doesn't have any of these considerations. They have, they have a brief, they are about the historical character of Milton, and their comments are entirely consistent with that. Scenic roads doesn't have anything to say about the pavement in the front yard. The zoning bylaw has things to say about pavement in the backyard, in the front yard. And so that's an issue, that's where, that's where it needs to be addressed, needs to be addressed, the zoning. You know, so it's, it's, it's important to sort of understand that, you know, what you're dealing with is the destruction of the stone wall in the form of opening up a new entrance. The sort of the compensatory action to sort of make up for that is restoring the rest. And so ostensibly, it's a fair trade, it's typical of these sorts of things. To, to make the bank shot of, well, we don't like the pavement in the front yard, so we're not going to approve the opening, is really out of sort of the jurisdiction of planning board. Because honestly, they can do up to 30% of their front yard pavement without touching the stone. I mean, it doesn't make sense, but you could do it under the zoning. And so you need to look at these applications as an opportunity to sort of get those mitigation factors, you know, and try to craft the best sort of improvement. And just to Cheryl's earlier point, I did, I, I sent a message out to some fellow planners out in the Commonwealth. I got three or four examples of other scenic road regulations and bylaws. Sometimes people put it into zoning, sometimes people put it into regulations. I haven't had a chance to review them, but I specifically asked for examples that provided good guidance for planning boards. So hopefully, maybe there'd be some good tips and tricks in those.
Sean? I think Sean. Was that, you were next.
Right, yeah, sorry. I just, I just, I'm thank you for that, Tim, I mean, because I'm, I mean, I'm just going to make a comment. But I think you hit it, I was getting really confused, because, you know, we, we talked at length last time about, you know, recommendations on the lawn, driveway, pavers, asphalt. Now we're talking about trees, real estate value, curb cuts, splitting it up, you know, and approving one thing over the other. You know, the applicant is before us with one question, and that's all it is. And I feel like we're taking a long time on this and we're not even talking about what we're supposed to be answering. I mean, I just, I appreciate folks have the experience in real estate, but it's not our job to set her up for a future sale. Maybe that's, and nor would I ever want somebody to do that for me in my house. I mean, you know, it's my house, I'll decide what I do in my home, as long as it's within the bylaws. And we have one decision to make here, so I appreciate all the comments, but I feel like it's unfair to the applicant that we're going down all these, you know, radicals. So I just, I, you know, obviously Chair, you know, you're running the meeting, but I really hope we can, you know, just dive into the exact question that we're supposed to be answering and then just get to it.
Yes, Rich, that's great. Sean, you had your hand up too?
Yeah, I just have a question on the width of the drive opening. Is the applicant flexible to reduce that drive opening? Or has, has that been, have we, have we? Or has, has that been, have we, have we, have we determined that it's only a twenty-two foot opening that the applicant's asking for, Tim?
I just want to clarify, it's just the curb cut, not the driveway that would be the twenty-two feet. And as I stated before, that is actually much smaller than all the curb cuts around me. The actual driveway would be twelve feet. The curb cut just allows me to pull out of the driveway without pulling over the curb. Both the curb cuts across the street from me and next to me are twenty-six and a half feet wide. It's really just for ease of pulling out without making a turn that, you know, forces me onto the other side of the road.
Right. I just said that the figure that we need though is, you know, the driveway onto property.
Would be twelve feet, twelve feet wide. Width of the driveway on the property. It is within the thirty percent rule that the building department requires for impervious services in the front thirty feet of the property. I have a hundred and seventy feet of frontage, so, you know, a hundred and seventy times thirty feet gives me a good amount of square footage to have, you know, that amount of impervious surface. Um, the, the opening in the stone wall, I would, I, I don't know. I mean, I think it would probably be somewhere between twelve and twenty-two. But it probably, it would definitely not be wider than twenty-two. And I don't know if people remember this from the last meeting, but there is thirty-five feet of stone wall missing from directly in front of the house, where those stones would be used, you know, relocated to that area. They wouldn't just be tossed aside or gotten rid of. All of the stones would be used. There's a portion of the wall, like I said, that is, does not even exist right now, and I would put a stone wall there. So I would be adding stone wall in parts. And I also just want to clarify too that some of you think, oh, well, we'll just let her rebuild the stone wall but not make this opening. If, if I'm not allowed to, to do this project, I'm not going to just start dumping my money into rebuilding the stone wall. And I'm just being honest with you, I probably won't rebuild the stone wall if I can't do this driveway project.
Yeah. And I, you know, if I'm, if I still have the floor, I completely understand that, Kristen. And I think that was the point that was made earlier. The only reason we're having this conversation tonight is because of the stone wall. So I, I understand that. And Tim, is there a detail of what the stone wall that Kristen is proposing? What it will look like? I would like to understand what is being referred to as a stone wall, what Kristen's proposing she would build.
Yeah, it's my intention to build the stone wall to look, I mean, very similar to what the rest of Canton Ave looks like. You know, no mortar, basically like stacked stones. I even have pictures of what the wall used to look like over a hundred years ago. And it would be my intention to make it look the way it used to look when it was first built.
Kristen, if I could, I, I took photos this morning of the wall. If you were to leave your property and walk towards Kyle Road, there's a very different stone wall, which is a mortared stone wall across the street, is very similar. It's, it's a mortared stone wall. So you're, you're talking about a wall that is loose stone stacked.
Correct. I, I mean, just personally speaking, I prefer than the, um, the walls that have, do not have mortar. I, that's just my personal preference. I feel like it does look more historic that way.
Meredith, if I, if I, one last comment, I really would like to understand what this wall, you know, i- is intended to look like. It's more than just the brief description that we had. Even, even if Kristen would be able to provide some photographs of some stone walls that she would, and then, Tim, I don't want to get outside of my lane, but I'd like to understand if we're considering a stone wall that's going to be rebuilt, something that defines what that stone wall would be.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you drive towards Canton Ave, you know, down Canton Ave in any direction, I mean, probably towards Canton, anywhere along there is what it will end up looking like, particularly along the left side. And I'm happy to take pictures of specific sections to give you an idea of what I'd be going for and send those out to everybody.
I think, Kristen, what, what we have is a variety of stone wall conditions on Canton Ave. You know, right, right where you are is, is an example of the variety of conditions. But I'd, I'd prefer, if I'm asked to consider and cast a vote, have an understanding of what exactly your stone wall that you'd propose would be. And, and I do think that, for me anyway, there's a big difference between a twelve-foot wide opening and a stone wall and a twenty-two-foot wide opening and a stone wall. And I'd like clarification on how, what that width of opening would be in the stone wall. I mean, twelve to twenty-two means you have five feet more on each side.
Can I just chime in here? Something that came up again on the one on Hillside. You know, the width of the wall opening, if it's reduced, it takes it out of the scenic road application completely. So that trigger of coming here is an eighteen-foot wide opening. So if we'd like to have some say in, in this law, bear that in mind. And with that, if the chair would entertain a motion, I would like to move this.
Cheryl, can I, can I, can I just say something real quick, just based on Sean's comments also? The other thing in, in, in the regulations is that the planning board's got to render a decision within twenty to twenty-one days of the opening of the public hearing. The twenty-first day is June second. So I think one way to kind of square the circle is, is to, if, if, if the board is going to choose to approve the, the project, to condition that approval on, you know, Sean's request to provide precedent examples of, 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 of what, you know, what we'd like to see the restored stone wall to look like. And, you know, the planning board can, can approve that, you know, at, at a later date. But, but, you know, approve, approve the opening, you know, conditioned upon, upon providing those additional materials. Or, or else, or else you either have to meet between now and the second, or the applicant has to grant an extension or a continuation of the public hearing.
No, I think that, Tim, I was going to suggest the same thing, have a condition. And there is precedent that we do, I know there was a, wrote on, a couple on Harlan Street that we reviewed on Hillside, and they provided specs of, of what the stone was going to be and, you know, height, dimensions and so forth, and, and the style.
Yeah, sorry. And also the linear, the total linear foot, I know it's a hundred and seventy, it's the frontage. But of that, how many, how many linear feet will actually be a wa- wall? Will it be from the inside of the driveway openings? And so it would be nice to see that you're increasing the stone wall by so many, many old feet.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Can I, question two before you make a motion for Cheryl?
Sure, Rich, yes, please.
Just, my, so my question, and I guess I'd be okay with it, you know, not mention it again if the applicant is okay with it. But it sounds like what we're talking, what we're talking about is conditioning, like I'm, like perhaps we're going to say, yes, you can do it, but you have to build a wall in a certain way. My issue with that is that the wall is, I think everyone was kind of agreeing before, is non-existent. And so you're kind of saying, hey, I'm going to let you open up a non-existing wall if you literally recreate a wall that was not there in the first place. I have a problem with that because what if this applicant decides they don't want to build a wall in the end? I don't think she should have to put a wall there if it never was there in the first place because there's a few rocks there. And so I, I guess, again, if the board, like, but I also don't want that to derail a vote. So my question really is like, so like, for example, if Sean, if you're only like going to be okay with this is if there's now a wall, I don't want to derail it and find, have the applicant not get a project. And so I guess my question would be, and you don't have to answer this now, but my question is more for the applicant, are you okay with us conditioning for you to have to build a wall to put a driveway there? I personally don't think you, we should be doing that. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate at all in this case. But again, if the applicant's okay with it, in the ease of getting something approved, maybe I'd be okay with it.
Rich, I, I think the applicant, and Kristen, you can speak, is, she's offering to do this.
Offering it, but there's a difference between offering it now and saying, okay, you're offering it, now you have to do it.
When I'm coming before you all is permission to basically move stones that are part of a sunken down, destroyed wall. It's basically on my property. I don't know if it's due to erosion or other factors, but it is completely toppled over. It is barely the height of the sidewalk. Yet I felt that I shouldn't just go ahead and disturb it without your approval. So I'm here as, as a courtesy essentially to make sure the planning board is okay with me disrupting this completely dilapidated, if you can even call it a wall. And yes, like Richard said, as part of this, it is my hope to be able to, yeah, it is going to be an expensive project to do the driveway. It is going to be an expensive project to do the wall. The wall will probably come afterwards. I hope to someday, when I live in this house, I hope to live here the rest of my life. And I want to during some point in time, make this look like an actual wall again and make it look like the rest of Canton Ave. I hope to be able to do that. I hope I have the money to do that immediately after doing the driveway. But right now, all I'm asking for is permission to move the stones where I need another driveway opening.
I appreciate that, Kristen. I mean, so that's where I was going with this. It didn't, we would be conditioning something that's a little unfair, in my opinion. We're here to talk about the opening of the wall. We either say, in my, again, my opinion, we either say you can or cannot open up that space between that non-existing wall, which everybody is kind of alluding to the fact that it doesn't exist. I think we're going too far when we say, okay, but now you have to recreate a wall that I don't know how, when was the last time it was actually there or if it was there. And now I want you to show me what it's going to look like. I just think we're overstepping here. That's my opinion.
Sean, did you have your hand up too? Sorry.
I did, I did not intentionally. I will take it down.
Oh, no, that's all right. I just wanted to reiterate what Tim had mentioned. The condition, the conditions of the scenic way bylaw are preservation of natural resources, environmental values, historical values, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, and public safety. Those, those are really, those are our requirements. And, and I, as much as I understand, I, if, if there was no other way, if there was no other land to have a turnaround, I, I would see this as, I don't see that hardship. I think there are other ways to deal with this and preserve the environmental, historical, and scenic and aesthetic characteristics of that, of that stretch of Canton Ave. You know, if there was no other way, I would, I would think differently.
Meredith, I can just add to what you read though, that it's in the public way that we have jurisdiction. We have no jurisdiction.
And this, I'm referring to the public way. Yep, and I'm referring to this in the public way, yes, exactly.
But, but that's preservation. We're not, there is nothing to preserve. There, there's, again, I don't know if you've been by and looked at it. I have. I mean, heck, if you look at it online right now, it's, I believe the old picture is up there from before it was probably cut, the grass was cut. You can't even see if there's a rock. Okay, so.
I know. So Kristen could just go and apply for a seventeen-foot wide opening in the stone wall and withdraw this application because she would, we would have no jurisdiction.
Right.
I, I also think it's a little unfair for you to, you know, I don't know if any, how far any of you came onto my property. I invite you to walk around the entire thing if you want, and for you to decide that maybe I should pave all the way behind my house instead. And that would be better for your historical look. I don't agree. I have a lot of really beautiful gardens. I have two koi ponds. And I'd rather not destroy that. I'd rather, if I can, just have a semicircle driveway, like many of my other neighbors here in Milton, and make it safer for me to pull in and out.
Thank you. So do we have, did you want to make a motion, Cheryl?
I do.
Or did anybody else have a comment? I'm sorry, I don't want to cut anybody else off. Maggie, did you have anything else?
No, you know, I, it is a scenic road. And again, it's just trying to preserve and recreate and restore what we have. And, and I know it's just one layer of rocks, but it really still is a, a landscape feature. And a wall was there and the remnants of a wall is there. So even though it's sad, it really is really important. And it is, it's, it really sets Milton apart, and I think it's incumbent on us all to, we all chose to live here for reasons, and we chose the houses we live in and the streets we live on for reason, for personal reasons. And I've been through this, as I said. I've been through and rebuilt stone walls. And I too have a long driveway and I need to back out. And there are options. And to Meredith's point, I still don't see a hardship. I, I just don't see hardship. If you Google it, you, you can see the cars parked on the left-hand side of your driveway, and that's exactly how I park mine. And I have two kids with cars, and when we make it work. And I just, I am fearful that if we're going to vote for this, we're going to have to vote for every other one. And, and I'm just afraid of all this loss of green space and trees, and it's happening on the other side. You know, with the forty B and now with, you know, the land swap. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure it's probably going to get passed, and maybe it's better to sort of condition it. But you're just saying we can't even really condition the driveway. I'd love it if the driveway was in asphalt, but I know that's out of our jurisdiction. So I would be more inclined to vote for it if I could see, to Sean's point, some type of landscape plan. And materials used and how many yards of fill you'd have to be bringing in to bring it up to grade. Because you said, you know, we all can see it, the, the rocks are below grade. So it, and I know it's just cutting into a, a stone wall, but it really is a bigger project than that. So I would like to see conditions put in somehow too.
So I just would like to comment that, you know, some of the things that are being suggested are, are good design suggestions, but we have to make sure, and aesthetic suggestions, but we have to make sure we stay within our legal boundaries because otherwise we'll be subjecting the town to a legal challenge potentially. And, you know, that, and I don't disagree with, with a lot of what's been suggested in terms of how much pavement and seeing landscaping and so forth. But I'm also really sensitive to suggesting that we, if we don't feel as if our regulations are zoning and rules and regs are sufficient, then we need to revise those. We can't make it the response, we can't over-condition a particular applicant and treat that applicant differently than our rules and regs and our regulations, but in zoning say. And so I would suggest that, you know, like I said before with the fencing, we need to see what we can do with our, with the scenic road rules and regs. But also, as the town's looking at historic districts and historic properties, you know, is that a different avenue to address some of these design considerations? So with that, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, if you're ready.
Yes, please, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve an eighteen-foot wide opening, no more than eighteen-foot wide opening in the stone wall. And that the remaining, that the stone, condition that on bringing the stone out of the sort of partially buried condition that it is and rebuilding it in a dry, help me out, Maggie.
A dry stack.
A dry stack construction at a height no more than the wall adjacent to the property towards Kyle Roadside. I'm sorry, I don't know that orientation, but maybe we can get that.
All right, I, I got a question, Cheryl. Just, we're going to talk about it. I mean, we just heard from the applicant that she's, doesn't know. I mean, we just heard from the applicant that she doesn't know when she's going to be able to rebuild it, or if she, you know, intention is maybe rebuild, but it's kind of like what I was speaking before. If we put a condition on building this up to something that has not been there, you know, it's not, I can see, we had somebody come once before us and say they wanted to open up a section of the wall and move, you know, stone to another, and I think they even wanted to close a section of the wall. And, I mean, we put them through the wringer a bit because they were opening up a fully functioning wall. It looks like a legit wall. This is not one. And so we're conditioning something to a condition that doesn't exist. I mean, I would totally agree with that if, sorry, my son just came over from baseball. I would totally agree with that if we were going to condition it to go to a current state, to what the state is now, or even like, maybe it's 60%, 70% of the wall, and they're going to make it better. But it's 10% of a wall, and now we're asking them to rebuild an entire wall to 100%. That's a lot to ask, I think. I don't know. I mean, is there a way you can put some, you know, clarify back a little bit to what our hope or our desires would be for them to work on? But I think that was literally my question to Kristen a little while ago. Is your intention, what happens if we condition this and we tell you to do it? I think we just, we're going to say yes, and she's not going to be able to do what she wanted to do. And then probably she's just going to go a different route and get her approval and do it anyway, which.
Well, yeah, I mean, the stone walls that provide the scenic road characters for which it's designated do, in this construction, do require some upkeep periodically. So if we, if we say that we're allowed to, you're allowed to make openings in deteriorated walls without any improvements to them, I kind of see that, Rich, as being, not going far enough, really, in trying to do the preservation of the scenic road. So I'm trying to strike a balance.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I could go with that. And again, I think, I'd like to see this get approved some way, and the applicant will have to make a decision on how they want to, you know, go about it after the fact. I just, again, I agree with you. The fact of the matter is, though, I think if anybody walked by that house, might not see the wall. You know what I mean? You might not even know there was, is one there. I mean, there, at least what I saw, it looked like buried some of the rocks, you know? And so, again, I would even totally be for that. And again, I'll go with that if that's what gets us there. My issue is, you're looking, like, let's call it a percentage of a wall now. It's less than 10, right? It's not even a wall. And so what we're supposed to say is, can you open up that nonexistent wall? Fantastic.
Yeah, but Rich, then, if you take that and play it out, what if somebody has a wall and they just let it deteriorate, or they knock it down? And they say, look, it's not in good shape, so I really don't want to keep it anymore. Or I don't, now I want to put an opening in it, and it's going to deteriorate even more, and the stones are going to just be dispersed. I mean, where do you kind of draw a bit of a line, right?
Yeah, no, no, no. I appreciate that. No, no, and I'm not saying, I mean, I'm disagreeing a bit, but I get it. So, I mean, I see where the balance has to be. My thing is if, you know, I don't, I don't know if it will be, if anybody has pictures out back, back far, this was a wall, but I don't know when the applicant bought the home, but.
She showed pictures. Yeah, they were in her original presentation.
This S. applicant didn't let it deteriorate and didn't, I don't want to go on this road. I get it. I mean, if that's what gets us there, I don't even know if it does, but I'm fine with it. I think, yeah, I mean, I'm for the project.
Great. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Oh, Maggie, sorry.
No, no, just, I'm still making up my mind. And I know this is not relevant to it, but do you know what your plans are for? Are you going to pave it or do stone? Because that might help me make up my mind, too.
I think it's our hope, just given the age of the home, it was built in the 1700s, and we do think it would look great if it had like a brick or cobblestone driveway. I don't know if we will be able to afford to do that for the entirety of the driveway, but we will be soliciting quotes for that and going from there. Asphalt would not be the first choice, but we may end up going with it. It just depends on the price.
The piece stone, you know, gravel or piece stone?
It's not conducive to, you know, plowing, and it just requires so much more maintenance. So that is also just not my first choice, but it's something I would consider.
Okay, thanks.
Meredith, I think I'm very comfortable with what Cheryl has proposed. And I do not want to place an undue burden on the resident. And however I may feel about other aesthetics, I would be willing to second Cheryl's motion.
Thank you, Sean. That's great. Okay, then let's do a roll call vote, and we can go around. Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
No.
And myself, no. And thank you. So it is, we, it is passed, and we can go ahead. And Tim, do you want to write a decision on that, or just, you know?
Yeah, what I.
Our recommendation was approved?
Yeah, what I typically do in these cases is just write a letter to the applicant that lays out the procedure of history and the conditions. And then I make sure that that gets into the hands of the applicant and then DPW and inspectors.
That's great.
So Kristen, be on the lookout for that. That'll probably come sometime next week.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, now we can move on to our old business. And we have the design guidelines next on the agenda. But I'm wondering, because I think it would be very quick, if it's okay with Dodson and Finkler, if we allowed, if we did the 131 Elliott condo doc discussion? Because I think that'll be brief and don't want to hold them up while we focus on the presentation. How would the other members feel? Would that be okay? Okay. All right, so do we have, is Steve here? Can we bring him in on 131 Elliott?
Steve, if you can unmute Star Six.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to tee it up, Tim, or do you want to?
I have some notes that I took based on my review of the documents. There's a couple of things in the master deed that I noted, and then a number of things in the declaration of trust. I don't know if the board members had wanted to lead off with anything. I just, this is pretty fresh in my mind. Just basically, in the master deed, in section two, and actually in a couple of places throughout, Steve, there are some kind of placeholder double Xs in kind of dates of plans and book and page references. We'll want to get those in so that they're accurately reflected.
Well, yes, what we're doing is we're getting together the Mylar and also the site, the as-built site plan. And when we, we're going to do a dry run at the registry to make sure everything is acceptable to them. So any edits or things that, this is an example of it, if we can get an overall vote that the body of the documents are okay, and then we can fill in these things, and maybe the board could take a vote to have you review them before we file or come back, or whatever we need to do would be fine.
Yeah, we can figure that out. I just want to, I just want to just make, just note that. And the other thing in the, in the master deed that I wanted to get the board's opinion on, because I might not be clear on what we actually did a couple of weeks ago, is in section 8A about the parking situation. And let me bring up the, sorry, I got to bring up the master deed so I can see. I said section 8A. So it says in 8A, it says condominium contains 87 parking spaces. This master deed provides for parking spaces in accordance with the purpose of decision. There are 22 outdoor spaces, three to be assigned to the unit owner of the commercial unit and the initial deed of that unit, 19 outdoor parking spaces. Parking by residents of condominium, their guests and service providers between 6:00 PM and 9:00 AM in accordance with reasonable rules set forth by the condominium trustees. Between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, these spaces will be available to the public and it will start to exceed hours in accordance with the rules set by the government. That's, those are the time periods currently in the special permit, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, so it goes on, and this is where I wanted to kind of get some clarity. It goes on to say, 36 parking spaces on the ground floor of the building and 29 spaces on the first floor. 12 parking spaces on the ground floor shall be assigned to the commercial unit and the initial deed of the unit. These 12 parking spaces shall be used for restricted business purposes of the commercial unit owner between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, residents, their guests, and service providers. And then it goes on to whatever. The decision for the amendment that we did a few weeks ago, it says 12 indoor spaces to be used for restricted business purposes between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM for business, and between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM for residents, their guests, and service providers. The next line in the decision, and Cheryl, as the drafter, you can hopefully provide some clarity here. The 19 outdoor spaces shall be subject to the same use schedule. All other provisions of the special permit shall remain in full force effect. We say there, the 19 outdoor spaces shall be subject to the same use schedule. We mean the same use schedule as is in the special permit today, or the same use schedule as 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM for business, yes.
I actually intended it, and I don't know if everyone understood it that way, but to be the 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Yeah, and I saw that too, Tim. And I, so I think that was what the discretion was as well. But I'd have to go back to the tape to confirm that, unless others recall better than I do.
That was what I recall our conversation and what we agreed on.
That's what I assumed, yeah.
Me also. I assume the same.
And Tim, while you're there, there's a reference to the special permit with a certain date, and there's at least one of them, but that should be as amended. It shouldn't be just the original date. There was a reduction of one parking space, I think, in the First Amendment. And now I think we said there's three amendments. So that's, that should be reflected as well.
Yeah, so I think, I think just to be, just be safe. Let's reference every amendment. I don't have one, whatever. But, but yeah, Steve, I think that's a good note to make sure that there and anywhere else, to reference those amendments, to the extent that they're relevant. And then I guess, Steve, is that, are you hearing us correctly that we want, the decision for the amendment a few weeks ago was to subject the outdoor parking spaces to the same schedule, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for business, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM residents? All right, so.
We can change, yeah, no problem.
So you'll make that change. The other thing, sorry, what was that?
One of the references, I found another one, too, where it references the 12 parking spaces. Actually, not the ground floor, it's the first floor, where the 29 spaces are, so.
Okay.
A little edit will do. But if you could forward me the little punch list, and I'll have our attorney change everything, Tim, that'd be great.
Okay. Did I find that pen? So I'm going to do that. The other, the other thing that I, that I kind of, I tried to keep a little bit of a checklist as I was going through both the master deed and the, the.
Special.
The declaration of trust, is all of the things in the special permit that the condo association is kind of obligated to do. And I came up with a number of them, and they're all basic things. There's nothing out of this world crazy. Keep the area clean of debris, snow, and ice. There's a drain to central ab that they're responsible for retaining. Making shared parking regulations, operating a towing program, repairing snow damage, maintaining the site, trash room procedures, all very sort of basic stuff that I didn't see in either the declaration of trust or the master deed. And I'm kind of, I'm wondering now, how do we, how do we make sure that there's an understanding among the condo owners and the trustees that they have this obligation? I mean, is the understanding that there's reference to the special permit and that they're held responsible for the special permit, and that's how it gets kind of folded in? Or do we want to explicitly reference these items? And I think that's a decision for the board, but Steve, if you have any input there?
I think what I would like to do is reference the special permit and also the plans that were approved for the, notice of intent for the Conservation Commission, which touches on the stormwater, you know, the maintenance of the, of the main and things like that. So I think if you reference the plans with specifications, I think it would cover the things that you.
Yeah, I, just even in the difficulty in the last few weeks of getting all the amendments and to this special permit, I worry that down the road, the association won't have its hands on the special permit and its amendments. And when we drafted that decision, I think it was with care. And so I think those should be included in the actual document.
I would agree with that, too, Cheryl. It seems like it's better to duplicate it in multiple places, just so it's there, you know? And the condo docs will make sure it will be there for for those buying units, that they know their responsibilities.
So what I can do is, and I'll want to, I want to just confirm the other things, but I have a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 specific things that the special permit says the condominium association either shall or may do. And one of the things they may do is open up the parking lot for programs on the weekends, which is nice. And maybe do that, guys. Those are all in the special permit. You can, I just did a sort of a search for the word condominium. You can all confirm that independently if you want. What we can do is, if the documents are otherwise satisfactory, I can get this punch list to Steve and review, you know, for completion myself. If you're authorized, we can do that. I think these are all kind of basic things, and they're quite frankly, transcriptions of what's in the special permit. So I don't think there's a lot of room, you know, legal pros. If that would be acceptable, we could do that, just to not sort of drag out this process any longer. If everything else seemed to be acceptable. And, you know, having become something of an expert in condominium documents in the past year, this all seems just as dry and boring as mine, which makes me think that they're okay. But it's your call on this one.
Tim, could we take the, Cheryl touched on, couldn't we take the recorded special permit that's recorded with the registry along with the recorded amendments and just making it exhibit for the master deed to refer to? The way it would be all in there, we wouldn't be, I don't want the language to, as it might contradict or expand on or contract on whatever language is in that permit. Why don't we just use the permit as an exhibit?
That seems okay with me. That seems okay with me. As long as it's part of the same document that gets provided to the buyers.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
And referenced as.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
For exhibit, yeah.
Your special permit, you would want to connect the two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that's the easy way to do it, yeah.
So, excuse me. So just to, just to confirm, so we've got making the change to the language on the outdoor spaces to match the eight AM to eight PM language in the most recent amendment. We want to reference, whenever the special permit is referenced, we want to reference it as amended and, and the three amendments. So that we, we all know that it's been amendment, amended. Filling in those, those blanks for the dates and the books and page, that's still yet to be done, but, but will be. And then, you know, some, some, some language that references the obligations of the condominium association in the special permit and, and to, to see those as exhibits to the condominium documents. Did I miss anything?
No, that sounds good. Steve, is that good for you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll say.
So should we wait to see that before voting on anything seems to?
I think we could authorize, we could vote and we could authorize Tim to do the final review based upon the, I think it was five amendments that he mentioned, what happened to it? So was it five through list, Tim, four or five?
I thought it was four, it was.
Four, okay.
Referencing, referencing the amendments, filling in the Xs on the dates and book and page, changing the outdoor space time limits and then referencing the obligations of the condominium, condominium association in the special permit and adding those documents as exhibits to the condominium.
So I think we could move, you know, make the motion to approve the condominium documents subject to the revisions that Tim just outlined with the final review by the Director of Planning and Community Development. Does that sound like a motion?
Yes. I think that's good. I would be willing to second that. Should we say roll call? Are we all, any discussion, I should say? Sean, you look like you might have a question? No, okay.
No, I was gonna second it when you beat me to it.
Okay, sorry, keeping it moving. All right, roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thanks, Steve. We'll be in touch.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, enjoy the weekend, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
You too, Steve.
And I also just, before we go to Dodson and Flinker, I realized we did not vote to close the public hearing, which we needed to do for the scenic road. So if I could have a motion to close the public hearing on the, on six ninety-three Canton Ave, scenic road application.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All in favor, Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself. And just on the, the, on closing public hearings, Cheryl, I went back and reviewed. You did have a question if we ever closed the public hearing or voted to close the public hearing on twelve hundred Brush Hill Road. We did not take a vote on closing that. So would it be appropriate to do that now? Or should we put, I should probably put that on the agenda, Tim, right?
Did, did they, did that applicant state that they were withdrawing their application?
Yes.
Look, it's never tried to do the right things.
Just to be clean, I mean, they'll probably be back to us, you know, fairly soon, but.
Meredith, clean, clean has left the station a long time ago, but.
Okay, well, let's, I just want to, why don't we just take the, take a moment to, if I could have a motion to close the public hearing on the scenic road application at twelve hundred Brush Hill Road, I could have a motion to close that public hearing.
So moved.
And Maggie and Sean were not on at that time, so you guys don't have to vote. So don't look confused, I'm sorry, I should have said that, you guys. Yes, and I would second that. All in favor, Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, that has been closed. Okay, now we can bring in our Dodson and Flinker team.
So Dylan, you should be able to, to speak. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I see four board members?
Yeah, Rich, I don't know why. There we are, there.
Hey, Rich.
There.
Oh, he's gone again. All right.
Do you need to speak?
He's, he's there.
I'm here.
Okay.
Just like, I can't see you, you don't have your camera on, I don't have mine on.
I'd be happy to have my camera on, I think you guys.
You don't need to.
You'd have to enable me to do that. It's not, it's not on my end that it's turned off. Okay, so the purpose of tonight was for you all to give us feedback and to discuss each other's feedback.
Yes. Do you want to introduce, is there anything that you would like to say before we sort of offer comments? Dylan?
I just, I had initially just done, allowed to talk, but I, I just promoted Dylan to panelist because I realized he's gonna need to share a screen or something at some point.
Hey. Yeah, I mean, so I can go through the things that I heard last time, things that I heard that we should change and then some areas that I heard disagreement and some questions we have for you. But I also want to make sure that there's enough time for you guys to offer any comments that, that you have. So would you prefer that I start?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay. So the things that I heard last time that we should do are to add a statement that the board recognizes that there are contradictions between some of the guidelines, that the projects involve trade-offs and that the board would work with applicants to come up with a design that best meets, meets the intent of the bylaw and the guidelines. So as, with regards to that, I was wondering if there are any particular trade-offs that you guys imagine will come up? Just in, in general or from what you've seen in the design guidelines?
Hi, Meredith, ma'am?
Yes, please.
You know, the Master Plan Implementation Committee was involved in drafting the zoning and doing the study work and so forth for probably close to two years. And so I did, as Chair of that committee, I did send them the draft and ask if anyone wanted to offer any comments. The board, we, as a committee, we haven't taken any official votes yet, but one member of the committee, Tabor Keely, did offer some comment, and if you don't mind, I'll just share a little bit of that with you. And it's just more general. He, he wonders if they're too lengthy and repetitive and asks if they could be a bit more succinct. He, he considers it could very well be off-putting, if you would, to developers in, in terms of, is it going to make it too difficult to get something done? Is it therefore something where it won't encourage the kind of development that we're looking for? Will it attract the kind of people who don't care necessarily about whether they, how these guidelines work, right? So I, I think those are some interesting comments. And then he did ask, as we talked about in our last meeting, about the diagrams and really linking the diagrams to the text, you know, because there's some diagrams there, but that if they're finding the correlation exactly to the text, I think you kind of have to search for it. And I, I think that's something that I, perhaps you probably are already recognized. And then he thinks, you know, asked about a summary. So maybe, again, looking at, I have to look again at the front end of it, kind of, you know, why, why these are there and how they're going to be used and by whom. And I would have to go back and reread that part to, to see if there's some advice that, you know, we might have there. But anyway, those, those are the comments thus far from the deck committee, okay?
And Cheryl, yeah, I think what you had said, that we start the beginning by having saying, this is a, these are a guidance. These aren't, you know, you shall, these are like, we would like to see this. And I think a lot of times developers, sometimes they, they, they don't care, but they want to know, it will save them time if they just sort of have a sense of what to do, you know, which direction to design to. So, but I think by having a, you know, sort of an open statement saying that these are, these are simply guidelines, it will be less, you know, it will, it'll be received better by developers and not be off-putting, which would be our hope, so.
Dylan, Dylan, this is Sean, how are you?
I'm good, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. You know, my, my opinion with respect to what you prepared, I, I think it's great. I, I don't think it's restrictive in any way. I think it's responsible to the town and to the residents and, and to what we would want, you know, in this district and also, you know, to what was previously worked upon in the past in that overlay that was prepared. So, you know, I, I had commented in the last meeting about some really minor things. And as I read through it, I, I, I wouldn't want, want to be any more restrictive. This is my opinion, of course, and the other members will have this, but I wouldn't want to be any more restrictive than what's written. I think there's going to be some trade-offs along the way. And I, I'm, I'm pleased with the guidelines as they are. And I, although there's some questions, I was looking today at the guidelines that are on our, that are on our website, I think. Questions that are written in there, if I'm, if I'm reading this properly, are porches appropriate on Adam Street? I think that's a question that you still have, right? Should windows be recessed behind facade? And I think there's a question somewhere also about sidewalks and parking, should it be on private property? So there's a handful of questions that are there, but with the exception for those that I think you probably are looking for some input on. You know, I, I, I think it's, I think it's a real good piece of work.
Thanks, John. Yeah, so I, so I think there is an, there's an inherent conflict, right, between providing a lot of guidance and having it be overwhelming and providing too little and having it not be clear enough as to what you're looking for. So we're, we are definitely trying to find the middle ground there. I, having gone back through it, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't recommend adding anything more. I think it's, we put in pretty much everything we could think of and with the hope that you guys would then take out what you didn't want. Which is, you know, it just makes it easier to, it's easier to cut things than it is to add them at this point. So to go back to what Cheryl said, you know, I was, I was asking about trade-offs and I think that, that MPIC comment is, is getting to a key potential trade-off between between getting the development that you want in terms of the, the quantity of development or the speed of development you want and the quality of development that you want, right? So you want to strike the balance between, between quality and onerousness, I guess. And then I, I also see potential conflicts between the historic preservation goal and adjusting to new construction techniques. And then also between sort of design quality and also the goal for affordable housing and affordability. And, you know, when we wrote the design guidelines, we tried to, to keep those potential trade-offs in mind. But I'm curious whether you guys think that it is striking the right balance? And if you want to be explicit in that introductory statement about those, those specific trade-offs? Because I think they're probably gonna come up in your discussions as a board.
And I think that's where, that I think we'll have to look at case by case, what each project, you know, how, what it's presented and what the, you know, and balancing the affordable housing piece, which is really important to this board and to our community, you know, and costs, you know, of, of what they're trying to achieve too with profit margins, bottom line, as most developers need to do. So, so yeah, I, I don't know how specific, you know, we can, until we, the project before us, but yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
I'm just looking back at, you know, one point two, the intent, and it's just really kind of two short paragraphs with a quote from the, the zoning itself. And, and maybe there's some elaboration there, you know, like recognizing that, you know, that the district is diverse right there, because that's where some of the striking of balance or like some might not be applicable is going to come in. Like if a property is on the, I'm not, I'm getting my orientation mixed up, but let's just say on the waterfront side of Adam Street, it's going to have different considerations than if it's on High Street, right? And so, and even the, the property that's at the corner of Elliot and Adams, you know, they're all really different kinds of conditions. And so I think maybe we encourage here in the intent that the applicant really look at the unique micro-conditions of their property and analyze that first and show up and then use these guidelines sort of judiciously and respond to that micro-context. Because it wouldn't make sense to draw from High Street when you're doing something over at Extra Space Storage, for example, or at the web mill building, you know, you wanted, it's, it's a difference. And that, the porches, I think, are a good example of that, okay? So I, I really don't necessarily think they, myself, as in mostly as an architect, think that the porches are a good solution for Adam Street. However, you do have the Swift Hat Building, right, for example. So we could say, again, it's the kind of micro-context of the site. You wouldn't want the building, and I'm forgetting the name of that building, but it's, it's maybe the Masonic. It's the, it's right at the corner of Wharf Street and Adams, the beautiful brick building, right? That would look wonky with a little porch on in front of it, right? So, you know, you, it's again, the micro-climate or the micro-context. So, and even at Extra Space, it has the two small mill buildings there that are right on the water. And those don't have porches, but again, it's just a, it's kind of a different, the scale of the buildings makes a big difference in terms of what tools you want to use, right? You don't really need a step back or a setback on a small building, right? So anyway, that's just kind of, sort of thinking about it. If I were the architect taking, grabbing these guidelines and beginning a project, what do I start with? Really, I'm gonna start with the site and really trying to understand the site. What's next to it, what's on the site already? Is there a huge change of topography or not, you know? What's the road condition like, what's the sidewalk condition like, are there any trees there? You know, just that, we want to encourage that as the first step, I think.
So.
And even, they can even, yeah, they can even come to the board first with their site analysis. Say, are we understanding the site the same way you do?
Yeah. Okay.
We do, we do have a comment in the, um, let's see, someone, Steve G has his hand raised? Steve G, can we, oh. Talking is permitted?
Hello, Meredith, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, thanks for letting me join in.
Thanks, welcome, Steve, good to hear you.
And thank you to Dodson and Flinker for your report. There's, there's two pieces in the town website, I guess, where they. There's, there's two pieces in the town website, I guess, where they have the May ninth and the May 12th. One is the, I think the May ninth is the actual guidelines and the May 12th is the presentation. Is that correct? So the, the May ninth is the actual document that will go into the world. And May 12th was just for discussion at planning board meeting. Is that correct? Okay, what, let me start with May ninth. I think that you included a beautiful picture on the cover here. And I don't know if this is going to be part of your final report. But I think that the cover picture is very evocative of this neighborhood. And why some of the people I know feel so strongly about why we're connected to this neighborhood. So thank you for putting it in. I wonder what the source of that document is and what year that was generated, who, who made that drawing? So many drawings nowadays are computer generated, but this looks like it was done by hand. And I see carriages and it, it says so much about Boston being on one side and Milton being on the other side. With city and country with this massive factory in the middle. It really kind of captures the nature of the community. So I, I wonder if you could add the source of that imagery and what year it was generated. I, I'm looking at the table of contents and it seems like you have forty pages, but my document only has nine pages. Does that, is that table of contents correct? How many pages are there in the document? Forty or nine?
There are forty-three pages in the document.
Okay, I'm missing pages, I guess. Okay, I'll, I'll get, I'll get my hands on the forty page document because I think I have only nine at this point. I'll catch up with you. Maybe, maybe I ran out of paper in my printer. But basically, I think under relationships to design standards, the wording is architecturally coherent, visually attractive, attractive and compatible with the neighborhood. So I think that makes sense. You know, that's what we're looking for. So thank you for putting it in there. Item K goes to material, materiality. Building finished materialship shall be appropriate to New England traditional architecture. But, but shall not be limited to brick, stone, mortar or composite materials. See, I think you say it's not limited. I, I, can you clarify, are you, are we saying?
Steve, I want to just point out that what you're referring to are design standards that are currently in the zoning. They're, they were included in the design guidelines just for people's reference, but they're adopted local law in Milton already. So they're not something we're proposing. They're something that's on the books now.
So how would you approach a building with metal panels?
So the, so the purpose of the design guideline is to get to, design guidelines is to get to that kind of question.
Can, can you say you, you don't want to have some metal panels?
I think that's up to the board and I, I think we can get to a discussion of materials later. I think it's one of the questions that the board probably would, would like to discuss would be my guess.
I, I think that's a basic question I would have because I'm looking at the Citizens Bank Building going up now. And that is pretty astonishing in its contrast to the brick building next to it. And I don't, and that raises a question. Does this process apply to new construction only or does it apply to renovations as well? Is that just a question?
I can answer, it applies only to an application that comes in under the overlay. So these do not apply under the underlying zoning in the business district.
Okay. Thank you. I, I appreciated the fact about the screening of the mechanical systems. I think also your, your historical photographs are very helpful with dates and the source material in this particular document. I think it gives a feel for where we're coming from as a neighborhood. And then jumping down to architectural styles, the wording is proponents are expected to review the precedents. And should be prepared to explain how the design of their projects builds for specific precedents. So this goes to enforcement and, and the idea of not a variance. But I think the burden, if somebody were to use metal panels, it seems like the burden is on them to explain why they wouldn't go with traditional building materials. You see, is that, is that a correct way of thinking about it?
Yeah. So the section on materials, it's, it's on page twenty-two. So it's beyond what it sounds like you have. And what it talks about, it doesn't specify specific materials. It talks about basically the honest use of materials and using materials that are appropriate to the context. So I think it's a question for the board whether they want to be more specific about, about materials.
I think, I think my suggestion will be to take a conservative approach as a baseline. And then if somebody has a justification why they need to use a more experimental or modern material, then they can present it and it gets approved. But I think having a strong baseline, it's easier to have a clear understanding to precedents. I mean, we talked about precedents earlier in the document. And then we've gone through historical precedence is in these images here. Now, you could say the hat house is not in here, but I think it is a central part of the neighborhood. It's a certain scale and it has a relationship of a new building next to a triple decker, which is kind of an interesting thing. As a historical document, that shows where we are now. The yacht club building is not shown here. It would be nice to see that. And even something like eighty-eight Wharf Street, I think is a successful example of traditional materials in a high-end residential context that has a economics, hugely economic, successful background with, with restaurant on the base and residences on top. So I think putting in idiot wharf is an obvious part of the context that we're talking about. Then also in here on list, I see you have seventeen Canton Street. It's Canton Ave. And that building, as I understand it, is not historical. That building's new. The old building was imploded and this is all new construction. I could, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was a point of contention in the neighborhood. That why that building was knocked down so rapidly without consensus or debate. So might, might not want to include that one in the brochure. Oh, kidding.
Is that correct? Can somebody in the board or Tim let me know if that's true?
Well, I'll just put it out. I'll just put it out there as a, as a question. I, I and we don't need to litigate that now. But there's also other sources in the town that are architectural gems that I don't know if you want to include them. But the Forbes, the Forbes Museum, Eustace Estate, these are very important architectural buildings in the town. And even Milton Public Library is an example of a building that is modern that relates to historical context that, I don't know if you've ever seen that. But it's an old building with a new addition by Schwartz Silver in the back. And it's a wonderful example of what the developers and public and contractors and architects can do. So I think that comes to the point of as we present images, what are we aspiring to? And I don't know if we'll reach those, that type of level, but I think it's good to put them forward. Because I think in some of the earlier images we were looking at, there were images that were confusing. And, and I didn't understand why they were added. Now, if I jump over to the May 12th presentation on the second page, there's an image of, I guess of a similar project. But I, I don't know where it is. I don't know if that's in West Hollywood, California or Chicago, Illinois or Key West, Florida. I just, I just don't know what I'm looking at and why I'm looking at it. So I think Milton is a very particular place in showing images relating to this town is important. And as I, you know, the Associate's Building is an incredibly important building in this neighborhood. The brickwork is a signature of this neighborhood, this terracotta. I've been, and these can be done in a modern way. So I think, I think as a designer, it would be a fun challenge to say, oh, how do you take a brick building or into a modern interpretation? But I'm concerned that we're taking our references from other parts of the country and other parts of, that are not relevant, even on the you know, I, I did appreciate the fact that you showed a drawing that showed the base, the body and the cap. That was very, I think that's a useful drawing. It's a generic building. But above that, again, I don't know where that image comes from and how it applies to this particular place. The other thing I was confused about, and you don't have to answer right now, but we were talking a lot about pub, the public realm. And I don't see a lot of public realm, except for the park down where they keep the boats for Milton Yacht Club and the T, T State, T Station, there's a little park down there. Is that what you mean by public realm?
What I mean by public realm is public space. And in Milton Village, that's predominantly composed of the road right of way. So the space between the buildings, including the sidewalks and the street is the main aspect of the public realm in Milton Village. And then any, you know, park space as well. But for these guidelines are predominantly concerned with how buildings relate to public spaces and shape them.
Okay. And then at the last presentation, you had shown like how parking garages opened up onto a main street. And I'm thinking when you presented that, your point was that's something you don't want to see.
It's something that in the design guidelines, it said that garages should face sideways. And that service parking shouldn't be within fifty feet of the lot line. And at the last meeting, the board discussed that. And I think the conclusion that I came to from their discussion was that they think that is not feasible, given the site constraints. There are pretty limited depths on these lots. With significant grade changes between Adam Street and High Street. So when I get to the list of things that I heard last meeting, one of the ones I was going to say is that I think that's something the board was suggesting we take out.
Okay. I think that, that's a big question because that shapes Adam Street particularly. If you have a big garage door on Adam Street.
Yeah. Maybe we could put language in to say, to say, you know, if possible, to avoid doing that.
Okay. And that's, that, that, those are my only comments. Thank you.
Steve, if we could get your last name and your address, please, for the, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Meredith. It's Steve Jantil, eighty-five Adam Street.
Thank you, Steve. Great comments. Thank you so much. We also have another, Win Swenson, which I, maybe Denny, but it's. Would you like to add something?
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. It's Denny Swenson.
Yeah, thank you.
Green Street, town meeting member precinct five. It's so nice to see everybody. Good, good evening. I pulled out my markers and I was prepared to mark up these design guidelines. And I was pleasantly surprised to not find a great need to do so. I thought both the guideline documents online were quite thoughtful and quite thorough. So I applaud Dodson Flinker and good job to the planning board for providing enough feedback and guidelines, guidance to pull together such a thoughtful document. I think it will be quite helpful for the applicants and the residents in steering future developments in a positive direction. Much like the prior speaker, I would suggest the use of aspirational photos and visuals as much as possible. An example of an aspirational visual is on page twenty-six. It has a sidewalk photo and it says, the Linden Square Project in Wellesley uses technique to provide on-street parking and sidewalk lined with streets, plants, benches and brick paving. I just thought that was a great way to encourage developers to just think creatively and incorporate the kind of things that we would like to see. I watched the last couple of meetings and I thought Cheryl's proposal for narrowing Adam Street to widen the sidewalks and to have room for trees would help slow traffic and improve safety. I thought it was a great idea. I, I've been in this area a lot. I, I walked the site with a lot of view. And as we all know, there are speeding accidents right at this stretch of road all the time. In fact, the Swift Hat Shop is currently boarded up because of repeatedly getting crashed into by cars. So I, I thought a tree line down the middle of Adam Street suggested by Maggie would also be traffic coming and, and inviting. So I, I thought those were wonderful points that were made in, in your recent discussion. I know there's a log jam of traffic here at, at that spot in the mornings, afternoons, evenings. You know, and it seems like people sort of jump the light and rush from one light to the next, which is just so dangerous. And I hear a lot of stories of, of really bad accidents right there. So narrowing the street, adding trees would be transformational for this area and, and would offer a lot of wonderful streetscape opportunities. As you guys talked about last time, the parking issue is a difficult one. I watched your meeting and I had to agree with four of the points that you were discussing. One, allowing smaller driveway widths, smaller than twenty-four feet. You know, that makes sense to me. Maybe language about adequate space for safe egress and turning ability could be added instead of footage. I'm not sure if that's helpful, but I, I thought that might help you there. Number two, I agreed with allowing garage entrances facing the street to encourage onsite parking. That made sense to me, especially if new building would be providing a significant amount of parking. In other words, I don't know if you're only going to get one or two spaces. I don't know if it's quite worth it. And number three, there should be some limitation on surface parking distance to the lot line. Because you would not want a car up against the lot line. But I, I agree that scratching fifty feet as the amount, because these lots are so small. I, I thought of maybe twenty-five or thirty feet off a lot line. But I don't know, maybe, maybe someone has another way of configuring that. I, I don't quite have the answer, but I'm hoping maybe there's a better formula that will come forward in your discussion. As for porches, I doubt there will be porches on Adam Street. But I might leave that language in for any future porches on High Street. But I guess I would really be interested to hear from the residents on that one. But I think that's where you're going to see porches is on High Street. And a side note, in, in looking over all these notes and listening to your last two discussions, it seems that, you know, there's a need for a parking garage in the area. And I know that's really easy for me to say. But I could see a parking garage solving so many of the design issues that you're currently faced with. I like the way the history section explained that, quote, the village grew around the mills. I like the way the history section explained that, quote, "The village grew around the mills, housed workers who supported small businesses." And I just want to note that 85 Adam Street, as noted on page eight, that house was built in 1795. It was the dwelling of the Baker Chocolate Family and it was the original site of the Milton Public Library. So it seems from those historic photos that the retaining wall and door within that wall were there when the historic house was moved to this location. At probably like 1890 or something. So that whole setup is historic. And I know it's kind of quirky and I know we probably wouldn't put something like that there now for obvious reasons. But it does have a great deal of charm. The current owner inherited the property with the vinyl siding on it. Because that's what they were doing, you know, 30, 40 years ago. That was very popular, but I, you know. And, and that stall, stone wall is, is, has probably been there for a hundred years. So I'm fine if you don't want to build new stone walls elsewhere that tall in the village. But I just want to acknowledge that that unique historic feature is valued. And like you said earlier in your discussion, that the guidelines don't have much to do with something other than a brand new building going in. So it doesn't really mean to change these features on this house. So in the guidelines on page 15 and number eight, you could say any new stone wall should be kept as low as possible. And any new retaining walls adjacent to sidewalks should not be greater than three feet tall. On page 31, number three, you could add the word new and then carry on with lawn areas should be minimized to the extent possible in favor of the use of hardy ground covers, mass perennials and native grasses. Because at 85 Adams, the, the green grass and the tall stone wall are, are just really special features. They also have majestic landscape features like an active water fountain, beds of flowers that add color spring through fall and large beautiful evergreen shrubs. This is the only spot of green along the side of Adams in the stretch of Milton Village. And I'm just so grateful for it. It's a historical treasure in all of its glory. So there's, there's one issue, and I don't know that it's really the design guidelines place. But I, I just have to bring it up because it's, it's just sort of been unresolved in all of our meetings over all the gears of zoning and, and that's the aspect of these little houses on High Street and, and this one on 85 Adams, you know, built in the 1700s for the workers of businesses that were there at the time. They all still have families in them. And we, we don't want the people who live in these historic houses to feel at all, you know, pushed out. Because if, if they had to leave these houses, there's nowhere else in Milton like these homes to go to. They're very, very small houses on very, very small lots, interconnected village-like neighborhood. So this is a diversity in housing stock to hold on to. There's just nothing equivalent to go to. When, when, when the couple moved into 85 Adam Street 12 years ago, they were able to park on the street. Parking rules were not enforced at that time. Since we did the zoning overlay and reconfigured parking for the business use, there's nowhere for the residents of 85 Adam Street to park. They raised this question multiple times over the years of discussion of rezoning. And I just want to be very sensitive that, you know, gentrification is something that we just need to be very careful about. Diversity in people and diversity in the housing stock is something we need to hold on to where we have it. And we do have it here. It's very, very special. So if we want to do future overlays, it would be helpful to, to sort of demonstrate that we can solve a problem like this one. This historic house just does not have its own driveway. It never has in 100-year lifespan. But people have lived here and parked on the street for over 120 years. So I just don't want to say to people that in order to live where you have lived, you now need to buy a parking spot. Because the town decided to, unfortunately, through zoning, price you out of your property. So I just don't want to outprice regular people from affording to live in their house. So I, I can think of two options. Maybe other people can think of other options. But one would be, can we provide two on-street parking spots? Or a sticker allowing them to park in front of their house or near their house on Adams? And number two, in the future, is there a way to fold a spot or two for them into a future parking plan in a new development nearby? So I, I just wanted to put that out there. Like I said, I don't know if it's in the design guideline. It doesn't quite fit the design guideline discussion, but it's one of those leftover items that we weren't able to resolve in the zoning discussion. And I wonder if the planning board might, the planning director, to explore the sticker idea and the potential for on-street parking spots. And that many, many thanks for letting me speak tonight. It's nice to see you, all of you, and I hope you're having a great summer. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Those were great comments. Really appreciate that. That's very, very thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everybody.
Oh, Maggie? Yes?
Yeah, I was saying to Denny's point about the parking, that maybe we should consider some, you know, municipal parking lot that would be available to the residents within that area that maybe they could get a, get a parking pass either monthly or yearly. And so that they always would have a spot to park in. And even for those residents in, you know, who might live in one of these condos or apartments, if they have someone spend the night, they could then purchase, you know, an overnight parking spot in a municipal parking lot. So I think we do have to really be careful not to give away our municipal parking spots. And we need to have them not just for the train, the people who take the train, but also the people who live right in that area who might have the constraints of a smaller driveway. And just a couple other thoughts.
On that, Maggie, do you mind on that? I mean, the parking is really not part of the design guidelines. And I, I just want to point out that I understand that there is a system in place in town, kind of a hardship program. And I don't know who, which department is applied to for it. But there are people who do get permission to park on the street if they don't have a place to park on their property. And Tim might know which department that is.
That's the police department.
Police department, yeah. And, you know, as far, so I, I just don't want us to spend too much of Dodson Flinker time on things that, you know, are, are, are points that could be discussed. They're a little outside of what even we can do. Maybe we can advocate to others who have jurisdiction for things like the roadway and the parking. But anyway, that, that's just my comment on that.
Thanks, Maggie. Keep, you had, keep going.
Oh, yeah. And just like according to light fixtures, my, my fear is that the village is going to come to look like new. Everything is going to probably be new. And, you know, my concern is we're going to lose the village feel. So it would be nice sorted to see it. I know that everyone likes to have a certain cohesive aesthetic. But I always enjoy going to a particular little town and knowing, oh, this is unique to this town. I don't like going into a town and seeing all the same color awnings or the same exact light fixtures. I like to see a village that maybe has just been created over time. And I know a lot of the buildings will be new, but, you know, even in East Milton Square, you know, they all have now all these maroon awnings. And I don't, I, I think it's beginning to be, look a little too sterile. So I, maybe I'm a little bit different, but I like to see the front of the building kind of reflect the, the owner who stands behind the counter. And, and, you know, even in East Milton, I don't love the color of the pliables color. But that's still who they are. And so I, I do appreciate historic colors and historic features. But I don't want to make it so it looks too new and too modern and too matchy. I kind of would just like to be able to have some flexibility to be a little bit different in, in some of the buildings. That's about it.
Sean?
Previous speaker, Denny Swenson, had made one comment that I thought was important with respect to any type of a garage overhead door that would face Adam Street. I think it would be, it would be unfortunate if it only had a minimal amount of parking that would be inside that door. And I'm not sure how necessarily to address that, I think. But, you know, i- if, if, if an overhead door detracted from how that building appeared on Adam Street and there were only two, three or four spaces inside, it just, it would just seem to be quite a sacrifice to make.
Thank you. So I, I did have a couple, just a few comments, because I, I just think this is an excellent draft for the guidelines. Lighting, and, and I don't know how, you know, specific again that we want to be. But there's a big difference between seeing a lantern or gooseneck lighting versus just seeing just a generic contemporary light. And I don't know how to guide that. You know, being a little bit, not streetlights, but a little bit more specific on the lights. You know, and again, when you look at some of the older buildings, they have some beautiful empire-style lanterns on them. But, and I think you can make a new building, but have some soft, I guess, soft lighting, which is very appealing for a residential neighborhood and lighting that's not harsh. So I, I would like to see something, maybe that we could just, again, guidance on, on what the lighting would be. Also, I, I had a question just about replacement specifically to the historic buildings. Because we're going to run into that. I look at Bank of America, which has incredibly, you know, beautiful dental moldings and moldings around the doorway. Not that we can require somebody, you know, hopefully that they can preserve that. But if they can't, when they have to come in and, and replace materials, obviously it will be, you know, there's, there's many new types of materials that are, that are, you know, more weather resistant and durable than, than some of the earlier. But how do we put language in to guide them to, to replace moldings and architectural details with, with this as similar as, as possible to what is, what is historically accurate? Would be, would be nice. You know, I, I look at the Milton Spa Building, which is going to be one of our, hopefully, one of our, our new projects. And that building has some unbelievable architectural elements to it that, that I think, you know, from what I've heard, the developer really wants to preserve a lot of that. But there's some beautiful iron gates. There's a cobblestone walkway. You know, going, leading down to that where that waterfront area, area is. And it might be nice just to encourage the preservation of those architectural features. I, I, those iron gates, I don't know if the board has walked down there or members from the community. But it is, it's such, you walk through that archway and it is so special. So as much of that that can be preserved, obviously, you know, during the special permit process and, you know, in discussions. But preservation of architectural details such as that would be, would be great. I think if we could include that. And then the other thing that I have a question, and this may be designed or not related, but thinking of those buildings are going to be tall, there's going to be more pedestrians walking along there. Doing something on a roof detail that protects from falling snow. I used to live, I used to work on Michigan Avenue in Chicago and literally there would be pieces of ice falling off of the buildings. So I don't know if that's something that would go into a roof design. But they're, they would be designed with elements, you know, to provide safety. You know, snow and ice and things that could, you know, impact pedestrians along that streetscape. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. And I think everything else, so many people have said. Did others have anything? I, I did get a letter which I will, which was circulated just with some comments from a, an architect who lives in Milton, just some added suggestions, which, which we can forward to Dodson and Flinker too, so. Anyone else? I see three hands. Cheryl?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment relative to parking distance from the property line. If you think about some small village, historic villages and places like, let's say, Stonington, Connecticut, or, you know, other places along waterfronts, that everything is small about them. And either even 30 feet from the property line is going to be, is huge. You know, and you can do beautiful things if you have nice landscape features. I think, you know, even the paving materials. And, you know, even five feet could be an adequate landscape buffer. You know, with, integrated with some kind of, maybe granite posts and, or some kind of wrought iron railing and then some landscape behind it. So I guess we would, I would want to say something about a landscape buffer. You know, that is the distance of which is judged based on the, the property itself, the conditions that the property itself, without giving a finite dimension. So that, that's one thing I just, I, I wanted to mention. And then another thing about, and maybe we can find a photograph of something like that. I do, I did like the suggestion of sort of reference photos of things. And I was thinking that even including a photograph of light fixtures, street fixtures, and maybe even light fixtures at other buildings. If, if there's some, Meredith, that you liked at 36 Central or 131 Elliott, you know, you know, one of those could be included. But I know that we, we looked at the street light or the parking lot lights for 131 Elliot to make sure that they had more historic character to them. And then I had made some comments before, so I just wanted to make sure we have time to go through, you know, Dylan's list so that we could give feedback to them on some of the questions they had. That's it for now.
Sean, did you want to add something to, and then we'll go to Dylan so he can go through his list?
No, I apologize. I didn't have my, I did not intend to have my hand up. Thank you.
Great. Dylan?
All right. Thank you all for those comments and especially to the members of the public who spent the time to look through this. I really appreciate you doing that. I know it's a lot. And yeah, it's great that you did it. So, okay, so going back to my list of things that I thought we heard some sort of consensus on last time to make changes. So adding a reference to other bonus incentives in addition to the district improvement incentive. So that's for affordable housing and historic preservation. While I am on that topic, a question that, you know, I thought that came up from one of the comments earlier, which was related to the need for a public parking lot. The district's improvement incentive in the zoning doesn't mention public parking as a desired improvement. So I'm wondering if that's something that should be added to the design guidelines as something that you guys would, would support? Is that an appropriate district improvement incentive project? Essentially, parking that's available to residents in the area or to visitors in the area, to people other than the residents of the site itself.
I would be a little concerned about encouraging overparking. You know, someone might want to build more parking than other use. So that does concern me. There is municipal town on land in this district that perhaps could be looked at, or maybe one of the larger parcels. But I would hate to see one of these other parcels where you want street deck. But I would hate to see one of these other parcels where you want street activation, you want housing, you want commercial use fronting, you want a nice landscape buffer. I'd hate to see someone providing, you know, proposing to provide more parking and say they want to get a bonus for it and so that they can build taller just, and then you don't have some of these other things that we're looking for.
Okay. Other members of the board agree with that?
I kind of think parking is fairly important, but just from talking to people down there. But, you know, but I don't exactly know the correct way to phrase it. I'm afraid that's, a developer might come in and just not provide enough parking. And where their visitor is going to be and where their, where the customers going to park. I spend a lot of time down there and I was, you know, member of the, the boatyard down there to the yacht club. So, and I drive my employees down there to hop on the train all the time. So I could always see that parking is a pretty important, kind of a big deal to people down there.
Good heavens. I do agree. It's going to be a balance, you know. But parking was really important to 88 Warf when that, that was an issue when that was going in. The commercial area, the commercial businesses down there. It's a shuffle, it's the type of, right now, there are a lot of the businesses that are down there are short-term visits, quick, you know, the post office, people are in and out, so there's a lot of turnover. At night, it's pretty empty down there in the evening, and that's when it would be more residential. But I think we definitely have to make for some, you know.
There's, a parking utilization study was done during the MPIC process of this. And it was done by Beta and they identified that there's room for development within the existing parking that's there. You know, part of the problem was on High Street, that the timed parking of two-hour limit was not enforced. So people could be parking there and hopping on the trolley. But there was a 65% utilization of those parking spaces during the day. And of course, it's because there's no nighttime business there, the business parking spaces are empty at night. And, you know, the town has a prohibition on parking, overnight parking. One of the things we talked about at the time that we were doing the studies was that maybe that should not be the case in the business district. So that those spaces could be utilized for overnight parking. And that would, could help serve the couple of residential buildings that are there. But the idea that the new buildings would have to self-park, the idea is that they, I mean, there was a lot of debate about what the adequate amount of parking for this area was. And there was a lot of study done, a lot of input provided by different sources. I myself, I called the owners of the multifamily buildings in the district and along Elliott Street and spoke to them about their parking situations, you know, whether they had enough, whether they had more demand for it. I took notes, those are available. I mean, there's Beta, as I said, did their study. So there's a lot of information about parking. And to give an incentive bonus, which is what we're talking about. First of all, it's not necessarily spelled out in the zoning, but say that you want to encourage parking in a district that's right on the trolley and right on the path is contrary to the three years of work that we did there in terms of use, wanting to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And there's studies, MAPC did a study, which we referenced then. You build more parking, you attract more traffic. You want to reduce speed, you want to reduce traffic, you have to increase pedestrian activity. So there's a.
Interesting study recently that looked at, it looked at parking and basically determined that the amount of car ownership was directly proportional to the amount of parking that was provided in the building. And so if you didn't provide free off-street parking, car ownership was much lower than if you did provide free off-street parking, if you're in a walkable place with sufficient transit. And Cheryl, I agree with you that your parking provisions in this, I think, are right on and admirable. And great for Milton to be moving in that direction.
Thank you. I think Jenny has her hand up, wanting to speak again. Jenny?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I just wanted to, just a piece of information that the parking during the day is limited to, I believe, two-hour time slots. So if you're a resident, like 85 Adams Street is, there's two people who live there. During the day, they have to keep moving their car every two hours because they'll get a ticket if they don't. So if you're going to be having more residential people come in, I know some people will take the train, but for those who don't, there's, there's just no system in place right now for them to. You know, I think you can get a hardship thing overnight, but there's nothing during the day. So there's nowhere for them to park in the village currently during the day. And they're residents there, they live there. And it didn't, you know, it used to not be enforced, but since we've changed the zoning, now it's getting enforced and now everything's more strictly regulated. So it's just, these people fell through the cracks and they keep speaking up. So I just wanted to share that piece of information. Thank you.
Can I, can I, can I?
Yes.
Dylan, that was, I was glad, I was going to actually ask you your thoughts on that and you gave them, but I'm almost, I'm wondering, because we've talked about this for at least every probably year that I've been on this board so far, and actually probably years that I was on the Warren Committee, is there's always the question, you know, there's lots of, because I think about that, right? I'm over East Milton. And the thought is, look at all the traffic, look at all, you know, parking issues. Maybe we need more parking. And so while I do think sometimes, well, you need more parking sometimes to park so that people can come into the area, you know, park and leave. But I do agree, if you build it, they will come. If you're building an apartment complex and you're building it with, you know, smaller units, limited parking, well, you're making, you're building it so that families don't move in. That's what you're doing, really. I mean, you're, you know, if you build three bedroom units with plenty of parking for all, those parking spots are going to get full. And so is there some, I know there is, but is there studies that folks should be looking at to look at this? Because there seems to be a debate usually about, well, we need to park because if we're going to, we're going to have residents come in, we're going to need to park those people. But the reality is, it all depends on what you're building. And it all depends on, you know, a lot of other factors. Because I do agree with your comment you made. Because I'm seeing that in other parts of the country, too, right? I mean, the reality is, look at all the buildings that are going up right now in Boston. I mean, the reality is, you took them apart, all those people that are, that are being put in.
One thing I would say is that we had a couple of developers provide feedback on the zoning when we were doing it. And, you know, they, the zoning, the parking requirements that we have in the overlay are consistent with what their thoughts were. The other thing that they and others have said is that these are minimum standards. Some towns are putting in maximum standards so that you don't build too many parking spaces. But developers were going to propose what they think they need to make a marketable and profitable project. So if they don't, if they think that they need more than one space per unit, they will propose more than one space per unit if it fits on the site. And if a business feels like they need more than what's in the zoning, they will do the same, or they won't propose it to go there. So it's, you know, there's, you have to have a balance in the zoning. One of the things that we worked with MAPC, you know, pretty extensively about is on that balance, because you don't want zoning that doesn't encourage any new developments. I mean, that's the problem with the business district, business districts we have is that the parking requirements are unachievable. So no, people can't do anything with their buildings under the current zoning. And so they, they don't generate much tax revenue. Milton Village, in terms of the 88 Warf and extra space storage, generates the majority of the tax revenue for the district. And it's, it's not a large percentage of our town's tax revenue. And every town meeting, people say, oh, we need to, we need more business tax revenue in this town or residents are getting killed. And what we said was, there'd be half a million dollars a year in two years ago's tax dollar, tax rates, if the build-out analysis, you know, was achieved. And that's only goes up, you know, because taxes go up every year, right? They certainly don't go down. So the, anyway, the, we don't want the zoning, we want the zoning to be sort of right size. And I think people felt as if this overlay hits that. It, and some developers penciled out projects. So they did the pro forma to see if it would work. And a couple of them, you know, they said that it would work, but for like local kind of developers who may also service contractors. You know, it's not the kind of, even the incentive, the bonus incentives are not so great that is a slam dunk, you're going to make a ton of money and walk away. I mean, these are projects where people really kind of want to invest in this community. And we have a couple who want to do it. In fact, you know, one of the property owners said that this, you know, that this overlay was really important to him investing in his properties and potentially coming through with a proposal. So, I mean, that's, anyway, that's my concern about it's putting it, we carefully considered the incentive bonuses on what, what should be, what should allow for those, the affordable housing, the historic preservation, and the public realm. And the public realm was really considered to be helping advance the waterfront planning that we were doing, public amenity, getting more people down to the water, enjoying the water, as well as if there's a place for a pocket park or other things along the sidewalk. So the town does own parking in that district and the town could consider how they could provide additional parking there. But I'd rather not see the limited development potential be used towards parking myself.
Can I, just one more comment?
Sure, yes, Richard.
Yeah, thanks. No, yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against parking. I mean, putting in adequate parking. I guess what I'm just saying is, let's be very careful because we could have some unintended consequences. If you, you require too much parking, I mean, the reality is, let's say, a building goes up. Well, if you require too much parking, you might inadvertently be asking them to build a couple extra floors so that they can put some parking garages underneath. Or, you know, shrink the property and put more parking. It could be another issue of an eyesore. But the reality is, again, if you build a parking garage there, you know, it doesn't really mean that somebody that's visiting is going to park there. I mean, people go for convenience and they park right on the street. And so I'm not sure that would fix the problem that you're thinking, anyway. And I instantly am thinking of East Milton. We're always saying that there's parking issues, but the reality is, I live here, there's not parking issues, there's enforcement issues. People would be legally parked every day. If they actually park where they're supposed to, they probably wouldn't see so many problems. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Rich. That's great.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next thing we heard last meeting. So that's to add reference to recommended tree list from, that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee maintains. Adding guidelines for LID to the sustainability section. Adding guidelines for replacements of extra materials in historic buildings. We had a discussion about accessibility. And there's, there's language in the design guidelines right now that basis, basically encourages applicants to design their buildings to minimize the use of ramps and rather to have sloping walkways. And I think what I heard from the board is to take that out. I just want to confirm that is what I heard.
It's similar to garages in a way, you know, the conversation with garages where you want to avoid them, but, but the option, what Cheryl pointed out, is you could end up with something even more unattractive and have to have a lift, you know, and destroy a historic building, sort of what the Forbes House Museum recently had to do.
Yeah, I mean.
The Forbes House Museum even went for, to the access board for variances. And I can tell you that the access board is made up of people who have disabilities. And when they are asked to grant variances and makes them unable to utilize places and spaces, it's not a very compelling argument to say it doesn't look good. You know, I, I've experienced.
That's not what I would say, but it does, you know, sometimes by allowing a ramp, you know, it makes it easier.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about the ramps is they have to have those handrails. They have to have the extensions. They have to have platforms if they're a certain distance and length. There's all sorts of regulations about how the ramps have to be designed. So what I think would be better is if you said that the accessibility components had to be integrated into the architecture and site planning solutions. So they, they look like they're part of the design intent and not additive to it. You could come up with some language like that. I think it fits, it allows for, you know, the design team to come up with the best solution.
And I think that was nicely handled. I, on the, what is the building? And I'm trying to remember the name of it. But in East Milton Square, the newer construction, which has the apartments above. And the rehab, it's the.
Elliott Physical.
Therapy, thank you. They did a nice job with that, I thought, the way they placed that off the parking and did a nice handicap accessible access.
You can do a nice ramp, even my mother-in-law mentioned as MS. So we installed a ramp for her and she's in an old house. And we built a stone wall and did a blue stone ramp.
One thing I would say, Maggie, is when you're doing it versus what the places of public accommodation, the public accommodation has a different code requirement. So that's, so, and you can do them that look decent, but they also do have very strict requirements when it's the public.
Cheryl, I like the, I like the language that you used, that you, in an approach to.
Integration, yeah. It's harder when their buildings are built like the Forbes House where they're not, there's no obvious location for it. It's easier, obviously, to design it new and have it fit in properly. And sometimes what can be done is you have that change of elevation happen within the building. So you come in and maybe there's a lift within the building or the elevator that already can do a half stop, you know. So there's, but it's different if you have multiple storefronts and you have, you don't have the common entrance. So it really going to, it's going to depend on the site and the use. And that's why I like the language. Thanks for agreeing. I think that language works.
Yeah, so what I have is accessibility element should be integral to the design of the site and the building.
And least, least obtrusive as possible somehow. I think to get to the point that people don't want to be visually dominant, right?
Yeah, I mean, I have to be honest, my concern is not so much about visual dominance. I just prefer that, what I'm trying to get at is that the building should be designed so that if possible, the floor elevation is as close as possible to the elevation of the street. So that you, so the building is as accessible as possible. Because a ramp is less accessible than an accurate entrance, right?
I think it's challenging because the slope of Adam Street exceeds 5%.
Right.
So, you know, 5% is the cutoff for the not being a. So, you know, 5% is the cutoff for the not being a ramp, right? So anyway, it is a design challenge.
Yeah. It's one that you guys are, you will face if there is a new building on Adam Street. That grade change is going to be challenging. All right, I'm going to move on to the next one. So, I think I heard clearly that we should, there was a reference to reconfiguring sidewalks to allow more on-street parking where the right-of-way is very constrained. That was intended for High Street. And I think I heard clearly to remove that. We've talked about the garage door and the 50-foot distance from the front lot line for parking. What I've heard tonight is that if there is a garage door, it should be for, facing Adam Street, it should be for a significant amount of parking. And Cheryl suggested that, that basically front parking should be adequately buffered in keeping with context of the site. So I think those are both good, good solutions there. I think I would throw out the number 10 parking spots minimum for a front garage. Do you guys want me to put in a number or you just want me to say a significant amount of parking? For a garage door facing a street?
What's the parking ratio in the zoning? Is it one to one?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. One spot per unit?
One thing that, in those studies that we did for, between those parcels that run between High and Adams is that you can utilize that change of grade by coming in from both sides. You know, so it's not as if you have to get all of your parking done through one location in one door. You could say a majority of the parking that's required be behind that door, I suppose. Because then if it's a small site that has 10 units versus a site that might get 30 units, you know, it can scale because like 10 spaces is a lot for a small site and not very much for a big site, you know?
Tim, to answer your question, it looks like it's one space for every thousand square feet of business floor area. And for residents, it's one for each residential unit. Together with such additional parking spaces, the board may determine to be reasonably needed for service providers, guests and deliveries. The planning board may increase the requisite number of residential parking spaces to one space for each studio or one bedroom and an average of 1.5 for each residential unit which has two or more bedrooms.
So if we were to be talking about a nine-unit mixed-use building could have a garage entrance on the street, but a smaller building, we would discourage that sort of thing. Is that kind of?
Yeah.
I mean, I, excuse me. Sorry, I think, I, I think that's fine. I have a broken record on parking, so I won't get into it.
I haven't heard the broken record.
I, what was that?
I haven't heard the broken record.
You know the tune, Dylan. But I do think that the concept of, you know, let's not have a garage for these spaces is the right one. And so I think setting that limit is probably fine. You know, we just may want to think a little bit critically as we're reviewing applications or as we're sort of looking at the future of the zoning, like what type. And there's no way of knowing. I mean, there could be site, you know, agglomeration. You know, there may be no development whatsoever. But, you know, what size of buildings are we kind of anticipating? If they're all going to wind up being, you know, small little projects, you know, then no harm, no foul. But if we do start seeing a lot of, you know, medium to larger scale projects, you know, it may be something to, you know, continue to keep in mind.
I mean, given that it's a guideline, it can be adjusted. But it does give some guidance to folks, well, you don't want to see a bunch of garage doors, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the simplest thing to do would be to say we prefer not to see garage doors fronting the street. And we'll be looking for creative site designs that avoid that. Particularly for smaller projects.
One thing I worry about that, though, is that, like, there's street front. Well, typically in the business district, Adam Street, let's say, there would be some street front continuity, like the citizens' kiosk is missing it, right? But if you have small sites and then you're going to have drive, multiple driveways and curb cuts, and then to be able to take a turn into the garage on the side, I just worry what it does to the street front. Just say minimized, the use of, it should be minimized or minimal or something like that. So that you're not going to get a six, big 16-foot wide garage door too. You know, do you understand my concern, Dylan, about the impact of having it be on the side of the building? Because now you're going to have.
Because, I mean, it's a curb cut either way, so.
Yeah, so now you're going to have to have a drive come in and then you have to be able to turn in.
Right.
So you're going to either have a garage door facing it or just an opening underneath the floor in the building. But it's wider because you got to make the swing to turn in now, potentially.
So it's almost like an alley.
Yeah, or you can build over the alley, I guess. But still have the same, now you're going to have like a darkened tunnel instead of a garage door, right?
Yeah, it still won't look that great.
That's kind of my thought.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it seems like you want to have as few curb cuts as possible and really want to encourage cross-access between those, between the properties.
Maybe we need an incentive for developers not to build.
Not to build at all?
Yeah. Is that a possibility? And I have to.
Isn't that the complete opposite of the purpose of the zone?
Well, not the whole entire. I don't know that. I don't know. I'm just saying, sometimes it's nice just to have different-sized buildings. You know, maybe some, it might look nice to only have a two-story building and not a four-story building. So that's a lost opportunity for that developer. So maybe there could be some incentive not to go up the full force.
We're going to pay them not to build on their land?
Well, not to, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, the taxes would be, obviously, I don't know, I'm just saying to, why not, just to have different, a different look. So it's not, my fear is it's just going to all be a straight line of four-story buildings.
So back to the garages, I do think, yeah, language to say, you know, avoid if possible, but, you know, going back to your, and narrowing the entrance if necessary, that narrowing the, the door size, Cheryl, was that the door size or the driveway size for both? The curb cut?
Yeah, I think, like I always, I think I said in one of our prior meetings, the city of Boston is really narrowing those curb cuts unless they're really for a pretty big development. And I don't see we have anything really that big here for them. So I do think narrowing it is a good idea, you know, keeping the curb cut pretty narrow and keeping the garage door size pretty narrow.
I heard 10 to 12 feet last time was the number you came up with. Okay. Signage. So I think the conclusion last time was to leave this in even though the planning board doesn't currently review signage? Is that correct? Okay. Okay, so now I'm moving on to topics where it wasn't clear which way the board wanted to go. So materials was kind of at the top of the list of that, whether to add greater specificity on specific materials or not. And if so, which materials? So, someone was speaking earlier about metal panels. The design guidelines don't currently say you can't do metal panels. They do say, you know, you should avoid materials that would have a lot of reflected glare or heat. And things like you should use, you know, traditional authentic materials. So do you guys, what do you want to do about materials?
Before we go there? Do you like a time check? How much, how many more topics left? It's 10 o'clock.
Let's hear, I have, I've got materials, windows, we've talked about porches. And then general questions, just are there things you want to cut? Which ideas need more illustration? There are particular precedents you want? So I've got five, five or six topics.
How does the board feel? Do we want to continue a little bit longer with these and make a little more headway or do we want to continue this?
Well, if we don't have a meeting on the second, the next thing's on the 23rd. What's your, what's the status for providing the additional, like the drawings and images that we talked about last time, Dylan?
We would do that with the next draft. And so our goal tonight is to get to the point where we can move to the next draft.
All right, so materials, is not something you need to diagram or have a, well, I suppose you could have some images. I mean, one of the things, I do think there's some pretty successful examples of integrating new buildings into existing or into existing historic contexts in, in Boston and other communities. But the finding all of these images and vetting them could take a little bit of time too. So I guess in the diagrams as well, if we're not going to have, I would think that your work is, has to end by the end of June, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to go a little bit longer tonight, Ben. That's, if others are, just try to make some progress.
I mean, so my thing would be is if we're going to have to meet anyway and keep going through it, I'd rather not. That's just, yeah, my opinion.
Well, we could keep the, we could meet on the second, Ben, and just only put design guidelines on our agenda.
What if we met at eight so we could attend the CPC? Those who want to attend and which one wants to attend?
Works for me. I'm, yeah, sorry, I'm, I haven't, I finished work 10 minutes before I jumped on, so I'm getting, you're losing me. That's why I'm not on camera, I'm slouched in my chair.
All right, I think that's a good, I think then we'll start at 8 o'clock, I think that, on the second.
I think, Dylan, if you could provide, even not integrated into this document, but reference images or diagrams and tell us where you think they're going to go. Just as before the seconds, it would help make the second more productive. You know, like tonight, sort of rehashing some of the things that we talked about two weeks ago. I'm not trying to be hypercritical, but it's less efficient use of our time, you know, than if we had some other things to react to. So I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to come back to the, I'm here tonight because you guys wanted to respond to the design guidelines and wanted to talk about them.
Right.
So that's, that is why I'm here, is to hear your comments on what was presented last time and the draft that you have.
Yeah, I like the way we're going in this direction, just, just sort of vetting out the comments.
Okay, so how much time do you think if we meet on the second at 8 o'clock that would need to be allocated, two hours for this or less, do you think, Dylan? In terms of what other updates or additional information we'll have by then?
I think it depends on how much there's to talk about. And I don't have a good answer for you on that, Cheryl. Yeah, I mean, my hope is that the list of topics shrinks, right? And that we get through the thorny issues, which I think to some degree we have, I think we have.
Okay.
Cheryl, we probably should plan for two hours. I mean, some of this stuff takes some discussion.
Yeah, I mean, okay, that's good.
Does that sound good, Tim?
One thing I would like to request, Meredith, too, is if we have public comment, if we can try and limit the public comment duration because we have less time tonight than we have for public comment on this topic. I know it's challenging, but if we can ask folks to limit their comments to say 10 minutes or something or five, depending on how many people want to comment, it gives the board members enough time to get all of their comments in as well.
Yeah, that's great. There were only two people who spoke, so I let them, you know, and the comments were excellent, I thought, from those who added comments tonight. Okay.
I'm not making a commentary on the call.
Oh, no, no, I know.
The board has enough time, that's all.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so then I guess it's consensus.
The other thing we wanted to do was set a date for a public forum.
Would that, would the 23rd be too soon to do that?
The 23rd of June?
Yeah.
No, not in my opinion. I think it depends on what level of draft you think is necessary for that.
Yeah, I might like to suggest, well, can we make a decision on that on the second so we see where we are with?
That's a good idea.
I'm a little concerned about doing it too soon to what we think is ready, you know, from our point of view.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I am sorry to pipe in, I don't usually do this, but do you guys want to meet before a town meeting on Monday?
I think we're going to need to, I'm, because actually, one thing that we did not get to tonight, which we have to decide, is discussion of the zoning articles that we had said we wanted to talk about in advance. And if we don't, unless we talk about it on the second, we're going to definitely need to before. So why, yes, let's plan on that, let's plan on just having time to meet before.
Okay, so find a room for you at the high school at, what, 6:30?
We're not at the high school, we're remote, so we'll figure it out remotely.
We're Zoom, and if you can be at the, you know, we'll find out. But if we could be at the Council on Aging again, that I thought worked well, where we were all in the same room.
So you want to be together, like in person?
In case we're asked to comment on things, that might be good.
But Meredith, one thing I would say is that the zoning article is very, at the end of the warrant. There's a lot of other articles in advance, so I don't know that we get to it on the 6th, you know? So whether we need to be in person for that, just consideration. Something to think about.
Yeah.
We might, we'll have a better sense of when, how many articles we get through, you know, on the 6th and the 7th, right? In terms of whether we need to have any board decisions made during town meeting.
Well, the only reason why I'm suggesting that maybe we do is sometimes they, the town meeting will vote to take certain articles earlier and switch the, switch the, the order to get some simpler things done first. And so that, there's always a chance that that might happen. So, all right, so let's, we will continue our discussion on the design guidelines until 8:00 PM on June 2nd. If that's good for you, Dylan, are you free that night? We should make sure that that works with your schedule.
Is, is it possible for you all to meet on the 9th?
We have town meeting.
Okay. The 8th?
Did anybody have a conflict for the 8th? I could do the 8th.
I, the only.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, the only idea if I can do the 6th and 7th, I'm, I'm, I'm on a long flight that, yeah, so. And I'm flying back night on the 10th, so that's why those two days are.
Right. Would you mind if we kept, do you have a conflict, it sounds like, Dylan?
I just want to make sure I have enough time to get to something else.
Well, I think if that's the worry, then we should keep it and at least go through these comments. And then, as I suggested, even if it's not a complete set of photos or diagrams, get us at least a couple examples, just to make as much progress as we can.
Yep, sounds good.
But this has been excellent, Dylan, I, everyone who's read this has been so impressed and has just thoroughly enjoyed reading through it and just can envision what this, what this district could look like, which is really exciting, so you've very impressive work, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry tonight was a slog.
Well, and I'm sorry that we got a slow start, we were a little bit late, late to get going on this, so. But thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call, Sean?
Hi.
Rich?
Yeah, yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you all. Good night. Good night.
Good night.